Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us today for the regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights, uh, of the, it should have been special meeting, right?
Yes.
For the special meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council, which is called to order today at 6 o'clock PM on the dot. Madam Clerk, may you please take roll call?
Hassan Ahmad.
President.
Moby Doom.
Here.
Nancy Breyer.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Hassan Saab.
Uh, present.
In Tom Wenzel.
Present.
Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have our Pledge of Allegiance. We're gonna have Councilman Wenzel.
Oh, thank you. I pledge allegiance to those like of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman. You're in seated. You're welcome. All right, next up, we have the Agenda Approval.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the Agenda for the Special Meeting of May 6, 2025, as submitted.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have public hearings and public comments. We have two minutes in the beginning. Anybody? Anybody from the audience? Anyone on Zoom? How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I would like to request for, um, the purchase and payment of the police vehicles to be discussed before the public hearing about the budget, if possible.
Why?
I don't know if the chief has places to be. I don't know if he wants to stay for the entire budget hearing here.
So how come the chief didn't request that?
Chief, is it, is that what you need?
Yeah, please.
Well, I don't think that's a hard ask, so I appreciate our chief of staff for asking that. Because you got, it looks like you got a haircut, so.
Yeah.
Okay. So why don't we make the switch of 9A to be put at 5A? And why don't we put 5A at 9A? Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else from the audience? Nothing, Rachel?
I have more time to talk later.
Okay. Uh, anyone else on Zoom seeing none? We're gonna go ahead and move it over to, uh, 9A.
Councilor Chair.
Hang on, let me get there. Next up is 9A Police Chief, Hader Purchase and Payment of Police Vehicles.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council awarded a bid to purchase of 10 vehicles to Bruno Ford for a total of 700, 711,908 dollars and 60 cents, and authorized the mayor and the clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city. In addition, authorized the comptroller to do a budget amendment to increase forfeiture GL account 265-330-831265 by 711,908 dollars and 60 cents. Furthermore, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to authorize and sign a necessary paperwork and warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from account 265-330-831265 as outlined in 9A.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion on this? I will say, I, uh, I spoke today regarding, uh, the counts. This is not coming from fund balances, so this is coming from the forfeiture fund. Um, and we have close to $2 million. So we're spending about $711,000 today. Just want to make that for the record. Um, and, and hopefully this passes here tonight and so that we can continue to strengthen our fleets for our police department.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman.
I just wanna say how important this is. I actually did a ride along last week with the police department, and they had, uh, I think a 2024 Explorer I was riding in, and I swear, it seemed like the shocks were gonna fall off of it from the back, because these cars are being ran 24 hours a day with no brakes. Because they're short on cars, so this is crucial to advancing the police department and moving it forward. And I appreciate the chief for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none? All in favor? Please, well, chief, you wanna say anything?
No, sir.
All in favor? Please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, congratulations, chief. Say a little words. Now, we're gonna go back to 5A. Now, we have the opening, the public hearing. We have the opening of the public hearing regarding our agenda. Before 5A is approved, we actually have to open it up to public hearing. And so I am calling on any residents to come forward regarding, uh, our budget.
Do I need a motion, Councilor Chair?
Do I need a motion?
Yes.
I thought you had to go to an open hearing first.
Councilor Chair.
Okay. Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council opened the public hearing at 6:05 PM for the purpose of hearing comments or objections, if any, to the proposed corporate fund budget for the City of Dearborn Heights for the fiscal year of 2025, 2026, as outlined in 5-A.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? We have an open hearing. I would like to quickly ask, uh, Mehdi to go through the changes that we've made. Need to discuss those.
Need the vote to open it.
Yeah, council, no.
Oh, do we have to take the entire vote? Yeah, we have a motion with a second.
We have a motion on the table. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. So now we're officially in our open, our, our public hearing.
Councilor Chair, just to make sure, would you like us to go through the personnel page changes and then the budget changes, or just the budget to begin with?
Well, let me, let me open that up.
Yeah.
They're all highlighted, the changes are all highlighted in yellow.
Yeah, go ahead. Let's start with the personnel pages. Okay.
Thank you for this, Bobby. Thank you. So the first changes are gonna be on page two of the personnel pages in the 20th District Court. Uh, Michelle Atkins requested to change the judge salaries back down to 91,448, as that is not determined by the city, but by the, uh, committee on the, the board. And then, at the bottom, the deputy court clerk two, uh, it dropped down to three, and then deputy court clerk two, who just started, dropped on, uh, increased by one, uh, due to the salary change. So deputy court clerk two was at 39,435. There's three of them. And then there's one deputy court clerk two at 35,839. And then on page three, under the mayor's budget, the only change that we had in this bu, this budget is the chief of staff, an increase to 85,000 per year request.
I, I, I wanted to ask a question on this, and I'm sorry for interrupting. I know that our executive secretary, uh, say no names because we don't, we're not allowed, which I don't know why, but, um, excuse me? Yeah. Mariana has told us not to mention names. I don't, I don't think.
That's not the way we've always done it. We've done it for years.
So the exec, the executive secretary, isn't they, don't they get paid from DPW? Or no, I'm sorry.
They used to be half ordinance, half, uh, mayor, but that changed, I think, last budget.
Yeah.
She can speak on that.
If you recall, the ordinance department got an additional full-time clerical position that used to work half for ordinance and half for police. Uh, now she's fully working for the ordinance officer, so when that happened last fiscal year, um, those clerical duties were assigned to her, and the salary came fully from the mayor's budget.
I just want you to know, last year's budget was still 50/50. So this change had to have been done this year.
It was, uh, mentioned during the budget hearing about, um, the executive secretary is gonna be fully in the mayor's budget.
Okay. Let me stand, let me stand and clear.
I had a question back on the deputy clerk twos.
Yes.
Uh, one, you, three of them, uh, got an increase of almost 5,000, where the other one only got an increase of, uh, 1,100.
So, um, previously, there were four deputy court clerk twos at 39,435.
Mm-hmm.
However, one of them retired.
Okay.
And they hired a new hire, and the new hire starts at the lower rate.
Okay.
That's why she split them.
Just wanted to double check.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any other council members? Okay.
Okay. The next, uh, change would be on page seven, under HR. Uh, Director of Human Resources is gonna be at 85,000. Now, page 11, Police Department. Uh, there are two changes. There's gonna be a change to the captain up to two, and a change to the sergeants up to 18 for the employee counts.
Those, um, 18 would include the two new sworn-in sergeants, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And then on page 12, for the fire department, the police chief, the fire chief has been matched to the police chief's salary.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And then, on page 13, for building, the director of building and engineering, his salary was increased to 100,000.
Okay, I, for the building and safety, um, the, for the building department.
Yes.
I think there was an error on here, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know if, uh, the building director talked to you regarding?
About, um, because I was not aware of anything outside of the council study session that we had during his department. I could coordinate with him, figuring out exactly what kind of mistake there was.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem. Now, uh, page 14, ordinance. Uh, we changed from seven ordinance officers to eight ordinance officers, budgeted.
What page is that?
Sorry, that one's not highlighted.
14.
Yeah. Page 14.
There was no changes on here.
Yeah, we, we didn't highlight that line item by accident. Uh, ordinance officer, it used to be seven on the previous budget, proposed, now it's eight.
No. Then also, uh, Mehdi, I got a question.
Yes.
The chief also. I had a talk with the director a week ago, um, to streamline the services and everything. I just wanna know, like, why, why can't we have them or chief, um, why can't we get them to have lean, access to lean, instead of every time they gotta write a ticket, they gotta go back to the police department, do it there, then go back out on the road, which wastes about two hours for every single ordinance officer.
I'm not aware of that, but I can work with them to see if we're gonna make that process.
Yeah, whatever licensing and budget, because that would save, that would keep them on.
You wanna talk?
From what I believe, it's, it's also a training issue that you need to pass certain classes to have access to lean. Um, I don't know if that's something that the ordinance officers can get, but from what I understand, only people with certain training.
But they have, they have access, the director has access to lean at the police department, but their tablets or anything on the road, they don't, because they gotta physically write the ticket back at the police department. So every time they write a ticket, and they gotta look up something, they gotta drive back to the police department.
So again, it's my understanding that the ordinance officers have never had access to lean. That's why the clerical staff used to work for half police, half ordinance, and now she's fully in ordinance, because she also used to have access to lean, so she used to get all the information for that. So it's my understanding that there is a specific access type, but we can work with them to try to figure out how to get it.
I'd like to streamline the ordinance department to be digital, so that way our ordinance officers are more focused on the streets than spending half of the day back at the police department, writing tickets or research and stuff, when they should have access in their vehicles.
I agree.
So that would be, then, that investment would be worth itself, instead of every three, four ordinance officers getting off the road to go back and meet the director there to do this.
Hang on one second. Director, hang on one second. I'm gonna let her finish, but if you wanna speak, please speak through there.
Sorry, while he's walking up there, the other change in that department was the director's salary from 78,750 to 85, as requested by council. Page 14, yeah.
Yes, I don't have.
Director, if you can just give us a scope of the process you talked to me about, so they can all understand it better.
Right. Right now, I'm the only one that has access to the Secretary of State, and that's how we run everybody, but they have to be a Michigan resident to get a hit on them. We don't have lean access because we're not part of the police department, and only part of the police department has access to lean. So our guys can't get that unless we have access, become part of the police department. So until it happens, I'm doing all the tickets right now, and have to do it all through us, Secretary of State in Michigan. I have no outside hits and anything else. So that's gonna be a problem.
I mean, I don't, I don't see why we can't merge them, so they can have the resources. Honestly, you'll streamline.
This is completely different than personnel page.
I know, but it's part of the budget, and I'd like to include funds for it to get it streamlined. I think it's important.
Yeah, but that would be more, that's someone to me, then, that would be IT. IT would be merging them together.
Councilor Chair, I apologize. Do you mean access to the lean system for the ordinance officers? I think that, that's security issues, and that's, a lot of regulations with.
Once again, we'd have to become part of the police department in order for that to happen. Our guys can't have the access unless they become part of the police department. That's why we had a secretary working for the records department in the police department, and she did all our lean checks. Once she came over to our department, we lost that, so we had to get access to the Secretary of State, so we had some type of access to run plates and people in order to write tickets. And I'm the only one that has access to that, so now I'm doing all that. So what, what gives you, if, Councilman, if I'm assuming, what gives you the ability to do it, but, and, and you're not part of the police department, but not another ordinance department? The Secretary of State has different rules than lean. They're not as stringent, but I had to have the mayor sign a letter, we had to go through the process, had to send them all the paperwork to the Secretary of State, then they approved me, and now I'm the only one that has access, because there's gotta be a secured location in our office, which my office is. So like I said, lean's different. Like I said, if they're lean certified, and they're a part of the police department, they could do the stuff on the street, they could write tickets, they could run people, run plates. Right now, I'm the only one that has access for that, and it's only through the Secretary of State, which only means Michigan hits.
That, that's audited, and it's criminal prosecutions.
Yeah, you, we have to be careful for giving up just anybody, I think, there, I mean.
Right, no, no, but I mean, it's for their job. I'm not saying this is to the public. It's for the ordinance officer. Obviously, there's gonna be training, everything, I'm just saying, I'd like to allocate money to streamline it, where, like Dearborn, for example, they go out to write you a ticket, the ticket is written on the spot and printed, instead of coming back to an office.
They could have the pads, iPads.
But they can't write tickets. No.
Like I said, I think because they work in the police department, they're part of the police department, that's why they have the access in Dearborn. Why don't we look at, why don't we look and see what they do, instead of reinventing the wheel? And then, you know, coming back to the drawing table on this one. Well, yes, I, I, the, the ordinance officers or their ticket writers are part of the police department. That's why they have the access.
So are you, I'm sorry, Councilor Chair. So are you saying they are police officers too?
No, they're, they're not, but they're part of the police department, they get paid by the police department, which gives them the right to get the lean access. Lean is really sticky on who can have it.
So basically, you're saying we need to merge the ordinance department with the police department in order to do so?
In order to get the lean access, would probably be the only way to do it.
So this is like a charter, almost, uh? No. No. Yeah, because it's a different department by itself.
We can explore it. I, I, I see what you're saying. We can explore it and look into it, and I'll che, check with Chief Hider and then with the state and see what we can do to streamline it.
Director, so right now, do they have to come back to the office, or they can call you and?
Well, basically, what they do is, we have a sheet they fill out, with the person they wanna run, or the license plate they wanna run. I have to do it. Then we have a sheet or an online form we fill out with the case it goes to. I mean, it's a lot to do just to run somebody, and like I said, no one else has access to it. I do, so I have to do that on top of everything else. So, anybody, any tickets they want written? Like I said, we wrote 200 violations last month, and three quarters of those had to come through me, so they get the information for the ops number, date of birth and stuff like that, so they can write their tickets.
I mean, I know, but the councilman's saying that every ordinance officer has to go back to the office to do so. I mean, do they do every single ticket, or they do it at the end of the day?
What they do is, some will do it in the morning.
Okay.
Then they'll do their day, and if they have more stuff, they'll come back, and they bring it to me, and then what I do is give the information back, they write their tickets, the tickets come back to the girl, she enters them, and go over to the court.
Such a tedious, awesome. I mean, I, I, we're trying to make it easy on you guys, so whatever, if you cannot come up with something, and we're all support, so.
Councilor Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you have someone that works in the office. Can't, can't they write the tickets? Can't the, uh, the ordinance officers present her with the violation, and she writes the tickets and give them to you? You, you have, you have to have clearance from the Secretary of State, and it's gotta be a secured office, no one can come in and out of. That's why they do it in my office. My office door has to be closed every time I leave it, I gotta log off every time I leave my office, and I can't have somebody who's doing other stuff, running back and forth to court, you know, taking the chance for a door being left open, and then they come in, and we get violated, then we have nothing. Well, I'm, I'm saying, you know, instead of them spending their time, each officer writing the tickets in the morning or in the afternoon, just giving them to her. She has so much other stuff to do with the court, doing the court docket and entering the tickets, she has no free time. I mean, like I said, she entered over 200 tickets this past month, on top of doing court Tuesdays and Thursdays, and she, she, and plus, we get the monthly report, she has to do follow-ups on, she has no time. How much time does it take away from an officer in a day doing that? I, I couldn't give you a specific, like I said. An hour, two hours? Each, like, Russ Ortman works on Fridays, so he comes in and does all the stuff on Fridays. The other guys come in, some do them in the morning, some do them all in the evening. It, it all depends when they have time. If they're, I mean, if they're busy and runs, you know, it could be two days before they get to them.
Councilor Chair, if I, in response to the council.
Hang on one second, let the councilman finish here.
I'm, I'm good, yeah. I'm trying to answer his question.
Yeah, that, that sounds like it's, uh, not efficient. And it's, uh, jumping all over the, you got, jumped you in so many different loops just to enter a ticket. No wonder why we weren't writing tickets. It's hard enough to go through the process anyway.
But I mean, if you can write it right on the tablet and print it, and enter it in on the spot, you could just move over this block over, instead of having to go back to the department.
Oh, yeah. Councilor Chair, you want the officer writing the, that saw and witnessed it, because when they come to court, what they put down in that ticket is very important to them.
True, I agree.
And we need to have them, not some other person, other third party, writing it up.
Right.
Needs that officer, but maybe the tablet, like you mentioned, they can have, that can print it out, uh, there's some, that, we don't have it yet, but things that we can look at to streamline the process.
Director, I'm sorry, can you clarify exactly what kind of tickets and, like, what, what's?
Well, they're municipal civil infractions.
Okay.
So they're for blight, uh, you know, A-Ban vehicles, uh, you know, house and disrepair. I mean, they're.
Dog bites.
I mean, yeah, they're a long list of tickets.
So basically, if there's something with blight, to look up who's the owner, so you can write the ticket, that's it?
And that's the other thing, too, is, if it's an LLC, I mean, that we, we have no, we have no owner information. If, but if it comes back to a person, and they're, like I said, for us, if it's registered out of Maryland, we can't run anybody out of Maryland through the Secretary of State out of our system we're using, so now we've gotta take a little extra time, we have to go down to dispatch and have them try to run it for us, and, I mean, I said, it's, we're getting it done. I mean, they're writing a ton of tickets, we're getting it done. It just takes a lot of my day, because like I said, I have to run everything that comes to me, so.
I mean, I guess you need to figure out, between you and the chief, and we're all support, whatever you guys need to do. A hundred percent. Yeah, so. Since I have you, uh, up here, how many ordinance officer we had last year? Wasn't it six, then we added three?
Yeah, all right.
Nine.
That's why I was gonna bring that up.
So nine?
Yeah, but we're only showing eight, and it was supposed to be nine. I know you guys eliminated one, and you're telling us you brought another one, but the reality is, you didn't.
It was budgeted at seven, and then we added one. I do understand that three were added, however, uh, in order to have three ordinance officers, you have to have three vehicles, plus outfitting, uh, all the ordinance officers.
Mehdi, I, I appreciate you giving us, like, the tough on it.
Yeah.
The truth is, this body here, the legislative body, has the resolution for three more. So like, telling us you need the cars, you need this, we'll figure that out when that, when we cross that bridge.
So do you want to increase it back to nine total?
If that's what the resolution was, like, and I believe I told you guys at the last meeting, Councilman Wenzel put a resolution forward, it was nine. Will you please leave it at nine?
I'll put that nine.
Councilor Chair? I, if I'm not mistaken, I believe one of the officers is funded by Tifa, right? Yes. So. Part of, part of Sutifa, yes. Yeah. So that, that's, you know, that's free, freedom to the city. Maybe you should do four.
It still has to show under the ordinance department budget, or?
Yeah, you still have to.
Still to show here, the one who's getting paid by Tifa?
I believe so, that's in the appropriations from Tifa, uh, in the revenue section.
So it doesn't, it does not show over here?
It won't show on the personnel page, but in the budget, in the revenue section, it says appropriation from Tifa.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that total amount, within that total amount, there is that ordinance officer that's paid by Tifa.
So basically, we're paying seven over here right now, correct, for the, the one you have for us?
Based on this one, seven, with nine, it'll be eight.
There's nine total, one is paid to Tifa, so the, the budget, the, the fund balance, not to mention, the general ledger is only paying eight.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
We currently have six ordinance officers at this time. Six? Six. Total. Did we lose somebody? No, we've always had si, to, to, when I was hired in, we had six. Didn't we hire a young lady here?
We have not hired any.
I went to a, I went to the swearing.
It's seven. Yeah, we, we hired a female officer. It's seven now.
Oh, because one is in the building department also.
No, but he hasn't started in the building department.
Yes, he has. Kevin Abad, yes.
Oh, sorry, we do have seven, I'm sorry, that's my area, we have seven, that's my area, yes. I forgot he went over to the building, yes, so.
Yeah. Have it.
Okay.
All right, we'll talk about the, uh, streamlining. Okay. Director, thank you.
Thank you.
I think a lot of it is, I think a lot of it is that we don't have enough licensing for lean certification to give them. The big, the big factor is, we, we have to put a computer in their vehicles. Now that we've gotten new computers coming in, and we've gotten new police cars coming in, I think we can streamline that and get them computers put in their cars.
I mean, chief, we have so many decommissioned police vehicles. Yeah. We're complaining right now, one of the vehicles, well, we can, we can amend and transfer those vehicles from the police department to the ordinance department, they're already outfitted.
Yeah, we had to put the computers in them, and then, and then we could do that. The other part about what Dearborn has, Dearborn has handhelds. They have, they actually have under, in their possession. It's off of Wi-Fi, they work off Wi-Fi.
Right.
And we don't have that, but we do have something in place that we've never enforced. We don't have a parking enforcement in this city, we don't have it, but we do have something in our policy that allows our cadets to go out and do parking enforcement.
They've been staying there for over two years, chief, on garbage days.
Correct. That's something me and Lieutenant Paulus have been talking about, and it's a matter of getting them, uh, some bulletproof vests, and, uh, getting them in a vehicle that's equipped with a computer, and we're gonna put them out there.
Great.
But that's something that, it's there in place, we're doing, no one just acted on it. But it's huge, because we're getting complaints of garbage day.
Yeah.
Parking issues all the time. And another thing we do, our reserves here don't write tickets, which I thought was kinda strange. Why couldn't we have our reserves write parking tickets? Our ordinance officers are allowed to write blight tickets and trash day, not trash tickets, but other different things, dealing with CFOs and so on. Why do we have reserves that are not allowed to do anything but knock on doors to make sure people are safe? They need to be trained on how to issue tickets.
How can we change that, chief?
We just need to train them, get more licensing, and I don't think it's a problem, it really isn't.
Let's work on it.
You just get a lot of pushback from, from the people in the department with handing out this stuff. They're not MCOL certified, they're not police officers, but I'm sure we could work something out to give them a modified version of, of lean.
Absolutely. But please, look into the cars, the decommissioned police vehicles, because I know they're short of car.
Yes.
And those cars are just sitting in a parking lot.
Because I, that was one of the first things I talked about when I first came in, me and him had a conversation about, why aren't you guys out here writing parking tickets? And then that's when he told me, we don't even have a computer in our car, we don't even have lean, and I thought it was very, very odd that they're not given the equipment to go out here and do that type of enforcement.
Let's set up a meeting, get together one time, and we'll discuss it, and I, I think that's gonna be phenomenal.
Let's go to the personnel page, guys, here, on this.
Thank you.
Please, thank you, chief.
So your new total for the ordinance officers is gonna be 397,800.
What was it last year?
Uh.
Because it shouldn't just be the same thing as last year's, guys.
There were salary increases because of the, um, union contract, but it's a small change.
Yeah.
Oh, but for the total. So, yeah, the total for the department last year was 569,765, which, again, with the change for the 44,000, it'll be close, because the 551 will also go up 40.
How did we go down?
No, this was last year, without the.
Last year was 569, this year it's 532.
This year is 551 plus the 44,200, so it's gonna end up being a similar number. I was just talking about the officers area specifically.
Thank you.
And then, the last change is on page 19, library, Director McCaffrey did, uh, state those changes during the budget study session for his department.
Thank you very much.
Didn't we say all the directors to be at 85?
Yeah, they are.
Not, it, we, it still shows 82, does it show something?
What department, what department?
The library. Librarian. Still shows 82. Right?
Yes.
Yeah, I've seen it, I've seen it here, right?
Sorry, it's highlighted, but I don't know.
Well, make sure.
There was a director last week that I asked you to.
Emergency manager.
That was emergency manager.
Okay, and you updated it?
That's in, uh, page 20 and 21, I don't, page 21 and 22 are the new pages, one is for engineering, and one is for emergency manager. But I'll change, I'll make sure to make, make the change for the library director right now. Is there any other questions regarding the personnel pages? Okay.
Sorry, there's two new ones at the end, which are for the city engineer and the emergency manager, which you asked to separate.
Wait, let me see the city engineer.
Twenty-one and twenty-two.
Yeah, the city engineer here, we're just, uh.
So now, are we doing a different department for the engineer now?
Yeah, that was requested during the meeting.
Yeah, I know, but do we need to do it? I mean, is it just?
No, because the building department requested the engineer to be.
No, no, I understand, but I know it's part of the building department. Do we need to do something like a motion or like change amendments or anything?
Not to my knowledge.
No?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, you guys are gonna be approving the budget as a whole, so.
But I mean, are we creating a new department?
Yeah, because it's a department.
In the charter, the engineering department is already its own separate entity. So it's not like you're creating a new department. The city engineer has always been isolated. If you wanna get a legal opinion on that, we can, but we don't believe you need a motion to create a department.
Regardless, I mean, we're gonna approve the money as an engineer. If we have to create an ordinance for it, we can talk with.
Yeah, can you double check on it, just to make sure we're following the right policy and procedure?
Okay. So moving on to the budget changes. Uh, page one, there are three changes. We have the birth and death certificates. We dropped it to seven thousand dollars.
You're speaking to the mic. Can you pull the mic out? Thank you.
I know you hate when I do that. Uh, so for page one, we have birth and death certificates. We dropped that to seven thousand. And then we added state grants and MDHHS grant, which Mariana can talk more about, exactly what those grants are.
Again, these are grants that have been approved and we're getting the reimbursement for it. So this is the revenues for those. They'll, they'll offset the expenditures below.
I think we missed a couple. Sorry.
So just to give you a heads up, there are two of them that were discussed during the meeting. However, I sent an email regarding those about revenues not being posted and why they didn't match. That was the interest on investments and they.
No, we have the first one.
The business license.
There, no, we have line four sixty-five rental property.
Rental property?
Yeah, I think we're supposed to take that to seventy, seventy-eight, I think.
I did not have any notes regarding rental property registration.
And my notes, we're supposed to take it down from twenty thousand, seventy-eight hundred.
Are you? That wasn't discussed.
Which one was it?
I don't think that was.
Four six.
That was part of the building department revenues. The revenues that we discussed were related to the clerk's office.
You wrote it down? Yeah, George has it all. He wrote it down.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, uh.
For rental property registration, do you want to take it down to what amount?
Seventy-eight hundred.
Seventy-eight hundred.
And then we have the animal licenses. We took it down to fifteen.
So Counselor Chair, I just wanna bring up that, again, the historical trend has been higher and the budget is really tight right now. Uh, with the two changes that we have, we only have about forty thousand left in the fund balance. So if we do drop revenues, it will make the budget potentially be in deficit, depending on how much is dropped. It seems that the trend is around twenty thousand dollars that we're generating in revenue. So if we could at least make it fifteen thousand and be conservative that way, but dropping it a full ten thousand dollars seems a little high.
Do you guys have an updated number till like, till today's date or maybe current date? I know, that's almost like over a month ago.
I can show you right now. Um.
What's this for, by the way?
Rental property registration.
So it's still eleven thousand four hundred. Uh, but again, some things haven't been posted since.
So you think you're expecting nine thousand in the next six weeks?
Again, potentially. If you wanna be conservative, we could do fifteen thousand, but again, in the past, it's been.
Conservative would be going to eight thousand. You're, you're not even at ten thousand.
We are at eleven thousand already. And in the historical years, we've been hitting nineteen thousand.
I mean, that's, I mean, I'm okay with, I'm okay with fifteen. Fifteen.
Yes.
That's animal licenses. No, this is registration.
And then which other one did you have?
Uh, li- animal licenses, line four eighty-four.
Yeah.
I think we took that, we took that one down to fifteen too as well. Do we have an updated, uh, number on that one?
They're at four thousand. Sorry. They're at four thousand three hundred and thirty-eight.
Right now?
Yep.
Yeah. No, yeah, we're up to.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's fifteen thousand six hundred and sixty-two. I was reading it wrong. It's the uncollected revenue, the four thousand.
Okay, so, uh, are you guys okay taking it to seventeen-five, I guess?
Okay.
Council members for the animal licenses? Okay, seventeen-five.
I do apologize. I don't know why I didn't have that note down.
It happens. Okay, so birth certificate.
And then there were two of them that we discussed during the meeting, but then I sent an email out regarding the interest on, uh, investments as well as the business licenses. Uh, there was an issue with the systems not posting revenues, so they actually are gonna hit the mark.
Are they sent this page?
Uh, they would be business license. That would be pay four five seven.
Four five seven, line four five seven?
Uh, one zero one zero zero zero, four five seven point zero zero zero.
Business licenses, okay.
Yep. Uh, it's at twenty-seven thousand now. Previously, you got, you requested it to be, I forgot exactly the request, but we did not make that change, given that there was unposted revenue.
Okay, so we can make that change now then? Since.
No, but the, what I'm trying to tell you is we, it's well over our actual, like, estimate.
I understand. So you need, we need to take it up?
So we budgeted twenty thousand dollars in revenues and we've already hit thirty thousand eight hundred and fifteen in business licenses. But, yeah, during the budget hearings, it was requested to drop it, but the postings have now been posted.
Now, can we increase?
No, we can increase it then.
If you want to increase it, we can increase it.
Since it's, since we got two months to go, why don't you increase it to forty, to forty thousand?
No.
Thirty would be conservative.
Yeah, I mean, right now, we're at, you said twenty-seven?
Yes. Oh, now we're at thirty.
We are at thirty right now?
Yeah.
Up there on the screen.
It's at thirty-one.
So we can increase those.
We're at thirty-one right now?
Yeah. We got two months to go.
Okay. Uh, let's make it thirty-five then.
We can keep it at thirty. Do you wanna be conservative? Just.
Okay, that's fine.
I don't want Counselor Chair killing me after the meeting.
Okay.
Um, and then the interest on investments, that would be, hold on one second. That'll be on the second page. When we go to that page, I'll let you know.
Okay.
So is page one, is there any questions on page one?
So I know you highlighted the line five forty-nine. Can you remind me what, what we did there?
Yes, so Mariana can speak on that one.
So those were grants that had been requested, but for some reason had not been budgeted. But they've already been approved grants. Um, we have contract agreements for them. So their, the revenue is now showing to offset the expenses that we're gonna have with those grants.
Were approved, you said, though?
Correct.
So page one, uh, did you send us those grants?
Yeah, the, the council has approved them. If you want, they can find the motions for them. In the expense account, it specifically details which grant it is in the expenditure account, so you can go through specifically.
At least just send us approval that this one was approved, so we'll know which one we're talking about and link it to the line item.
Yeah, again, in the expense, there's a bigger breakdown, so it'll be easier for you to understand.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Any questions on page one? Okay, moving on to page two. We added a, um, grant revenue for fire, fire gear. Um, that is, that revenue is gonna be offset by an expense. So it balances each other out and, uh.
I'm sorry, which line item?
Uh, one zero one zero zero zero, six three five point zero zero zero, the first one highlighted on the sheet.
Okay.
Um, so that revenue is gonna be offset by an expense that is in the fire department.
Why are we getting all these, uh, updated revenues?
So as Mariana discussed in the previous meeting, the grants were not included, um, in the budget mistakenly by Shannon. So we, sorry, what we, Counselor Chair?
That was done intentionally because we asked her not to do that.
Well, these are.
These are approved.
They are approved.
Approved grants.
They're, they're gonna be expended this year.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. We, we just asked for all the grants not approved not to be included.
Mariana has a very detailed spreadsheet. She was concerned at the level of detail that would make your head spin. So she wanted to make it a little bit more easier to understand as to which grants cover which expenses. It makes my head spin. That's why I was trying to work with her and making it a lot simpler.
Okay.
Um, and then in the bottom, one zero one zero zero zero, six seven one point zero zero zero, senior trips. We dropped that down to forty thousand based on your request.
Correct.
And then.
I think you missed one, though.
The interest on investments is the one that, uh, I sent an email about, that the revenues weren't being posted.
Uh huh.
Um, we already, through March thirty-first, it's two hundred thousand. And that does not include A- April interest, so we are gonna hit the two hundred fifty thousand.
Okay. So line, Counselor Chair, before we move to six seven three, we did request to be dropped to one seventy-five. By saying he got the numbers now and it's at two hundred, so it should be hitting two fifty by, by this.
Because we don't have April, May, and June posted. So that's three, that's a quarter of the year. So if you look at a quarter of two hundred, you're looking at fifty thousand. That hits two hundred fifty thousand.
Can you pull it up for me?
On the screen. Second, second to last column is what we're currently at.
What's the exact number? Thank you. I got a question for you.
Yes.
I wanna go back to ordinance.
Yes.
Kevin. Liz.
Okay.
Rob.
Okay.
Rose, Ross, Floyd.
I mean, there's seven.
Hang on, hang on. Please for a second. I'm not here to argue with you. There's six. There's six full-time employees.
But he's budgeted for seven.
One part two.
We, we were supposedly, we were supposed to be at nine.
For the year, there was budgeted for seven, given the restrictions on the funds. This upcoming year, we have, we've made a more balanced budget, so you can afford the nine.
He was the seven. I'm so sorry. Lee just got promoted. So, yes, a vacancy recently.
Who just got promoted?
The director. Because Bill retired, that's right.
Sorry, yeah, I'm like, why is he?
I'm not into the staffing department. I'm, I'm the comptroller department.
Okay. Let's have the effects, please.
Okay.
I wanna make sure that, what, you know, we, we are preparing out.
You forgot yourself.
We wanna keep you.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Thank you, Mariana.
Yes.
Um, and then, uh, we have one zero one zero zero zero, six seven six point one zero zero. This is the Safe Streets For All and Safe Route to School match, uh, for that local streets will be reimbursing general fund for.
It'll be what?
Local streets will be reimbursing general fund for that, the match for the Safe Streets For All and Safe Route to School.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. That's one for like three hundred ninety thousand. We've been talking about it for like three years, though.
Yes. And then page three.
I'm trying to pretty move on. Which one, which was the last one you were talking about?
The foot, no.
The, the Safe Streets For All and Safe Route to School. There is a match that the city much, must pay.
Okay, what about the six eighty-two? Line six eighty-two.
One second. That wasn't, that wasn't a change at all.
But, yeah, that wasn't a change.
That was already there in the previous budget.
Nothing changed?
No.
I guess we have our, here are suspending changes?
No, what it is, is that we weren't paid for three years.
They were six months or one year behind that the director had to catch up on. So we are expecting them. The revenues just haven't been hitting as fast as they should, given that, uh, applications haven't been processed.
Okay.
Okay. So page three, we have appropriation from PEG Fund. That is the request to increase PEG Fund to three hundred thousand and we have to offset it by the revenue.
Wait. What about? Uh, eight one eight Media Services. We lowered it from fifteen thousand to five thousand, and I believe that was for like the, uh, council.
That wasn't when, we're not at that page yet.
I think, uh.
We're still on revenues.
We're on four.
You're on four now?
Page three.
We're on three. I'm on three as well.
So what's that count number?
Well, we had a new budget passed to you, like.
Yeah, page number changed between, uh, last time and this time. So you're not on council, you're on estimated revenues?
Yeah, so the page number sheet, it's gonna be off by a few because we had to add a few extra pages.
Yeah, because we're off by six pages.
Yes, that's why I'm going page by page instead of referring to.
Okay, so now we're line, uh, six nine nine?
Yeah, six nine nine zero one one. That's the PEG Fund, uh, appropriation from PEG Fund to, uh, match the expenditure for three hundred thousand dollars. Any other questions for the revenues?
No.
Thank you.
Okay. So City Council, the only change was a decrease to five thousand dollars for media services. Okay, district court, the salaries, we already spoke on fringe benefits. They change based on salaries. Dues and memberships, which is eight zero two point zero zero zero, uh, we changed to forty-five hundred based on the recommendation by Michelle. And then court fees, eight zero four point zero zero zero. We dropped that to forty-five to make up for twenty thousand in capital outlay, uh, from the request for, from Counselor Chair. Mayor's office, page six. Uh, we increased, uh, chief of staff salary to eighty-five thousand, so that changed the salary line item and the fringe benefit line item. Elections, nothing changed. That's page seven.
Seven.
Uh, page eight, general government. There were no changes on that one. Page nine, assessor's office.
Mm-hmm.
The only thing that we changed, we added was the commission, uh, commission fees for, uh, the board of review. We added fifteen hundred. I believe they get paid seventy-five dollars per meeting. Any questions so far?
Nope.
Page ten, corporation counsel. Uh, we did the budget for supplies at five hundred, the budget for contractual service, contractual services at seventy-five thousand. And the corporation counsel assistant at forty thousand.
What was that line I said seventy-five, professional services? Uh, eight one seven.
That we don't actually have any, uh, anything about, anything for that budget in four.
I don't know why I have here five thousand for some reason.
Five thousand?
Yeah, that's why.
What's this under?
Eight one seven, line eight one seven.
For page ten?
Uh, page ten, yeah. Number, uh, line eight one seven.
Eight one seven?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's the. Yeah, that's the requested, but it, we didn't have it in the budgeted for. It's empty.
On mine is the page ten.
I don't know, I don't know. What page is that? Yeah, we added five thousand here at. For contractual services.
Yeah, professional services court, court pro.
So professional service corp, pro, it went from, you spent four thousand, four thousand, you requested budget. Seventy five thousand, you gave them zero, and we took it up to five thousand dollars. And we did this at eleven twelve PM, and four nine twenty five. Good note. Thank you, team secretary. Remember, professional services for, what was that for again? It was, it was Michelle, it was the court that asked.
So this is the corporation council's budget. Um, the professional services court pro, do you recall what that is, Mr. Farina?
No, I don't. There's nothing budgeted for it, right?
They, they requested a five thousand during your meeting. Um, I know that originally the seventy five thousand was for all of the additional activities that he wanted to do with the juvenile court and different things like that.
If he doesn't need it, you don't need it then.
We need to take it off.
Well, we, we are proceeding with it. If, if we have it, I would keep it.
You spent four thousand dollars. Do you not know what you spent it on?
Well, if you're saying, if it's professional services, it'd be filing.
It was not spent, so to clarify.
The interpreter, was it the interpreter or the translator?
No, that's in the court's budget.
No, that's in their budget. We don't pay for that.
So again, this was for the additional professional services that we were going to uh provide for the juvenile court and different events for the community.
Something like that, to work with some of the programs that were initiated.
Correct.
Okay, well, I mean, it wasn't added. If we need to bring it back, I'm sure we can.
So should we add it?
No.
No?
That was in my notes. So page thirteen is where the next change is. Uh, we had the commission fees dropped to eight thousand based on the projected activity. And the fringe benefits changed, changed for that amount based on the amount we would be paying out for commissions.
What page was this?
Page thirteen.
Give us a second to get to that, please. This, we went from one thousand to eight thousand?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next page, on page fourteen, we have the comptroller's budget. We dropped from four twenty five for contractual services to three fifty for contractual services.
And that was for Plant Moran Gap, correct?
Yes. Okay, I'm going to talk about it now. Just regarding this budget, um, I do know that we uh budgeted for one comptroller, one deputy comptroller, and one accountant. Uh, when we are fully staffed, I do have a plan to bring to council possibly another employee that will assess further and bring in majority of the work that Plant Moran's doing for day-to-day operations into the comptroller's department. I do want to make sure that, when we do have a comptroller, deputy comptroller, and accountant, I um assess their responsibilities. And I will be able to determine whether that fourth employee is needed or not needed, but I do believe it probably will be needed, given the amount of work that we have in that department.
So that will cut the cost of Plant Moran Gap, right?
Uh, it'll be about a quarter of the cost. So it's going to be about a quarter of the cost of what Plant Moran would be.
No, he's saying, but by doing so, we're going to eliminate having Plant Moran. That was his question.
Yes. Um, but like I said, because I'm trying to be as fiscally responsible within the department, I don't want to add an employee until we, I'm able to determine uh the tasks necessary between the comptroller, deputy comptroller, and accountant.
Do we play Plant Moran from any other contractual service line items?
No. Now, I spoke with Plant Moran about this uh today. They do services for like water and sewer, library. However, however, technically, that is the responsibility of the comptroller department. However, uh, we should be appropriating more funds from those, like appropriations in the revenues, based on the increase in cost. However, when we bring that back in-house, the comptroller should, department should be in charge of doing the services that Plant Moran is providing on behalf of the other funds.
Thank you.
No problem. Oh, no, but they're asking like, because they do services, are we going to be appropriating funds?
No, my question is, I know here we have three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Have we given them anything else from any other contractual service that you are aware of?
Yes, we are.
We are, I know we are.
Benefits, but that's a subsidiary in a whole different uh area. We're not giving, the benefits and consulting is being paid out of HR, and that's twenty five thousand four hundred per quarter. That is currently out for bid, um, and we are hoping to find out the best option moving forward with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know. Just like I already witnessed.
Are, are we still on page fourteen?
No, we're going.
I'm sorry, before we move on, because I have here, the salary is to change to one forty three, and you have a one fifty. You know why?
Salaries?
Yeah. For the human resource department. The first line.
Oh, HR.
HR, yeah.
Sorry, I'm still on comptroller.
Yeah.
HR, uh, the salaries for the uh HR director, we originally requested a hundred. It went back to seventy eight, but then it went back up to eighty five.
So see personnel page.
Yeah, I, I had here like the change to be one forty three, but you have it one fifty. I just wanted to figure out.
So personnel page for one.
Oh, the old one, I know.
So when we went through the HR budget, you had requested for that budget to go down to the seventy eight thousand where it originally was, instead of the hundred that we had requested. So if we had made that deduction, it would have been at the one forty that you probably have in your numbers. But afterwards, when you decided to increase all of the directors to eighty five, we added the additional ten, so now it's at the one fifty.
Thank you.
Okay, because the salaries changed, we have a change in the fringe benefits to fourteen thousand two hundred fifty four dollars. And then contractual services, we dropped to one fifty. That is currently, it's a hundred thousand for the Plant Moran benefits in consulting, and fifty thousand for uh labor negotiations, contractual services.
The contractual services is going from one seventy to one fifty?
That's at one fifty now. We changed it.
Then. We also said, oh, we're combining, okay. Never mind.
Any other questions?
That's it, thank you.
So page sixteen, Board of Appeals. Zoning Board of Appeals, we did the commission fees increased by a thousand, which also increased the fringe benefits. Treasurer's Office Budget, we paid seventeen. Uh, we have a change in the travel notification based on uh requests, down to four thousand.
Do we play Plant Moran through the Treasurer's Department as well?
Uh, the, and the Plant Moran provides services to Treasury a lot, but we do not pay out of Treasury.
So they don't, we don't have them for contractual services?
No, so the contractual services that Treasury has um are for, most, most of it is due to the tax notice and to tax mailings and things of that nature.
And the investment advisors are also coming out of contractual services there.
Thank you.
No problem. The IT department, and I have no changes on that. One for page eighteen. Page nineteen, building and maintenance. I do not have any changes for that department.
But get uh, get with the director, and there's a change that he said that he missed.
Well, if he wants a change, he didn't relay that information to myself and Mariana, so I'll make sure.
That's why the councilman's asking you to get with him.
Or.
I, there is, there was some mistake on some paperwork, and I talked to the real estate budget that they missed. Um, if you can get with him, just double check.
Okay, I'll get with him.
Thank you, Manny.
I spend a lot of time with him each day, and I did not. We, we're literally with him an hour before this. I'll make sure to bring it to his intention and let him know exactly what uh he's missing.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Page twenty, we have Police Department. The salaries changed based on the two extra sergeants and the one extra captain. The holiday pay changed to reflect closer to the amount that we would be paying. Previously, it was at three hundred thousand. And then the fringe benefits changed based on the increase in those two values.
Yes.
Page twenty one, Emergency Manager. We increased the salary from seventy five thousand to eighty five thousand. Fire Department, we only increased the Fire Chief's salary to match the police chief's salary, which made the salaries go up by about twenty three thousand. And then fringe benefits up by a little bit. And then contractual services, down uh eight one eight point zero zero zero. We increased that to two twenty, given the necessary repairs that the Fire Chief sees he's going to need in the next fiscal year.
Yeah.
Building and engineering, we have a lot of changes here. Um, salaries, we removed the engineer out of the building uh department. And then we also increased the building director by a hundred to a hundred thousand. We decreased the part-time because the en, engineer part-time that we, the current part-time engineer we have is moving into the engineering department. And that changed the fringe benefits. The clothing line item was dropped to three thousand dollars, and then contractual services was put at thirty five thousand.
Contractual services?
Eight one eight point zero zero zero.
Thank you.
So page twenty four, ordinance. The salaries is going to go up based on the nine ordinance officers. We will change that number. I believe it's five ninety seven. And some change, we will increase that amount. And then fringe benefits also increased based on the salary increase, the extra employees. And then for four two six eight zero six, which is the contract we have with Michigan Humane Society. The contract is approximately one hundred fifteen thousand, and we put one seventeen just to keep it over.
I think it's important, I, I, I respect and appreciate the uh Humane Society, but their numbers are going to jump up drastically on us.
I was told by the previous director that the Michigan Humane Society, their services are way better than any other shelter, but.
And, and I wholeheartedly agree, but the truth is.
It costs a lot. Sometimes you won't be able to.
It's going to be a lot of money.
I was told you won't be able to, like, help the wildlife and cats and. It's a cost the city might want to discuss whether or not they want to take that on. We can have a meeting with the ordinance director regarding that contract.
Do we open up our own shelter?
Be cheaper.
I wouldn't mind. I can have my mom around it. She loves cats. Six indoor cats. Lots of cats. All my clothes are cat here. Uh, we are going to move on to page twenty five, which is our DBW Highway Department. We increased overtime by fifty thousand. We made the clothing line item fourteen thousand one hundred fifty to match what we expect with the new uniform uh agreement we have with UFRS. Fringe benefits increased based on overtime. Supplies uh was combined with materials and supplies to be thirty seven thousand. Uh, street signs was increased to twenty thousand based on Council Chair's recommendation. And then the underground storage tank liability, we put three thousand dollars for that charge. And then all the way at the bottom, we have Safe Streets, Safe Streets For All and Safe Route to Schools. Uh, we included those grants in this budget.
Are these grants too?
Those are the grants that were correlated with the revenues and on page one.
So I'm sorry, going back to the, to, to lines at the bottom, where's the money coming from?
The revenues, we just made that change in the revenues.
No, I understand, but where, where's the money coming from? Is it grants or is it?
So it's a grant with a match that's coming from local. So our portion of the match is coming from local, uh, and.
Why do we keep taking local money though?
It is a street project. It's, it's a crossing for Beach Daily and the Action Plan for the Roads.
Page twenty six, we have the engineering department, a new one. Basically, we have just the engineer at one twenty two four hundred, and then his part-time engineer at fifty thousand, and then the fringe benefits is based on the salaries. Any questions so far? No changes to page twenty seven in the recreation department. No changes to page twenty eight. There isn't anything budgeted for page twenty nine for the golf course.
Hold on, real quickly, are we on the planning commission?
No, we're on the twenty nine.
Right now, we're on, we're on the planning commission right now.
You got your page, you got stuff.
I know, man, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm looking at both, the ones that we did, and then, so from our notes.
That's why I'm trying to slow down for you just so. I'm going, I know I'm going a little too fast for one that, they don't have any changes.
It's like almost three hundred pages, so like, you know, we're gonna make sure we're doing it the right way.
No problem. So we're on page thirty right now. We have no changes in the planning commission.
Even though I think we uh.
I recall there was a change, it was a very small change. I think it might have just not been highlighted.
Yeah, yeah, it was from twenty five hundred to forty five.
Forty five hundred because the, and, uh, wreck and, what's your name, the manager?
Forty five hundred for commission fees?
To forty five hundred, yeah. Because they're having more meetings.
I vaguely remembered, and then, we did do that for the zoning board of appeals, um, but we didn't do that for the planning.
By the way, I, I just want to go back quickly to golf course.
Yes, I figured you want to talk about that. That's why I tried pausing, but then you switched to planning.
Yeah, um. They're about to open, and they're expecting their, their, the, the parking lot to be paved, which is, we're obligated to do because of the contract.
Yeah.
So like, we have no money in here, so like, what was your guys' plan?
I will say this, um.
Let me hear from Mariana, because this is more administrative here. This isn't like a comptroller's thing.
Sorry, I did ask the city engineer about that today because I know he's been getting all the specs for getting that project done. Um, I know originally we had budgeted eight hundred thousand two years ago before the construction renovations began, and we had postponed that project. That money would have to come from fund balance, because as you see, it's not.
You said eight hundred thousand?
Last time we had budgeted two years ago, it was eight hundred thousand. Right now, it's looking more like a million and a half, but we haven't gone out for bids.
Hold on, for a parking lot resurface?
Correct.
Okay, do me a favor. When that goes out for bid, I want every single bid that comes through, I physically want to see this. If you're telling me that parking lot cost a one point five million dollars, somebody's getting a kickback.
So again, even just the quarter that was presented through the schools was already half a million dollars. So it is the cost that the school and we are getting as well.
They're not just resurfacing. They're running a curb lift.
Again, we have, we haven't gone out for bids currently, so we'll see what the new numbers are.
So I, I kind of.
Let's just, let's just go to biz, let's wait for the biz. Let's not just uh jump into.
Consulting.
I mean.
I know.
I mean inflation, but let's just, yeah.
Yeah. Look, but what I will say is here though, you're saying we're going to have to go from fund balance. You just told me we only have forty thousand dollars left in our fund balance. So we won't even be able to go to fund balance, so you have. So we won't even be able to go to fund balance. So you have no way of paying for this, which we're contractually obligated to do. And now you're telling me, so you're telling me either way, we're using the fund balance to even balance out this budget because we're gonna be in a deficit. Yeah, so.
Absurd.
I mean, this is, uh, you know, this is something like, we gotta really discuss. I don't know, maybe.
Can I, can I provide, can I get contractor or subcontractors for the city to provide estimates for it instead of it going out through engineering?
I mean, the bids themselves will be open to the public to.
Guys, we can't even go out for bid, you can't no money to pay for it.
Just one-point-five million dollars is absurd.
Hey, councilman, for this, this is a completely different discussion. Here we have zero dollars in the budget. So even if we went out for bid, like, what's the point of going out for bid if you don't got the money in the, in the, that's budgeted for it? Or even if you did present the council, you don't have any money.
So again, council chair, during the last round of the golf course discussions, it was proposed to sell the golf course because it is more expensive to maintain it than to keep it. To the council and the council voted to maintain it as a golf course, so.
Resurfacing, you guys asked that?
No, when we did the original, um, lease to Onida.
No.
At that time, it was discussed and David Sabuda clearly stated that, that the golf course is never gonna generate enough revenue to maintain itself.
Time out, time out, time out. I, I don't mean to cut you off. I don't mean to cut you off.
Again, golf courses are expensive. That's all I'm trying to get to. At the state in which our golf course is, we knew we had to invest money into it.
For just for one second. I just wanna make a quick, please, nothing from the audience. I wanna make a hu, just a, a, a correction, cause you're saying things that never existed. Uh, you, we never were told, let's sell the golf course to Onida. We were never told, no, we were not.
Not to Onida. We said when Onida left, we had proposed to sell the golf course.
Ever said, all we ever said was, please, 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 hey guys, nothing from the audience. All, all the mayor did was go out for bids. We came back and we had, you know, this presented to us. And only thing that was told to us, if we don't vote on this, your grass is gonna burn and this thing is gonna fall into shambles. That's what we were told. We were never ever told, hey, it's gonna cost you too much money, you should sell it.
I can go back to the budget hearing from Mr. Sabuda, but, uh, one hundred percent, we knew that there was gonna be costs associated with bringing the golf course back.
You guys did a bad job explaining it to the public and to the council. You must have had this conversation privately, cause we were never told.
Okay, again, we knew there were gonna be costs associated with this. A preliminary budget was created at the time. There was eight-hundred thousand at the time that we had expected for the, for the parking lot to be.
Instead of restricting it, you spent.
Everything that is spent is spent with approval from the council. So yes, everything was spent in salaries, everything was spent in operations. That is, that is a situation that we're facing right now. You, the only option you have is to use fund balance.
The one in the fund balance you just told me.
Correct. There is no budget in the current revenues. There's a little bit left in the fund balance. Uh, but again, eventually, hopefully, the, the golf course will start generating revenue. It is a service that the residents want.
Open if their parking lot's not done.
Correct, which is why this is an expense that we're gonna have to face soon. Um, I'm, we're going out for bids, but, um, again, for the parking lot resurfacing, we're going out for bids for the parking lot resurfacing.
Guys, please, point of order, point of.
If we don't know the cost, we don't know what budget.
Please, point of order, Mariana, Perry's, point of order, guys, let's move on.
Okay.
I just want you to know, for the record, you never once told the council, I know you guys love to throw the council, you guys approved it, you guys approved it. But let me tell you what you guys did, what you guys did. You guys failed to tell us what's coming out of the fund balance anytime you threw a account number on there. You guys constantly, just like when our, when our old director came up here and said, oh, I had some extra money for my budget last year. No, you didn't.
Council chair, the, the budget was coming out of the fund balance when all of these projects for the golf course were created.
No, it was coming out of ARPA funds.
No, it was not.
Yes, it was. Yes, it was. You stand as.
But that was part of the fund balance. It was from the revenue loss in the fund balance. It's still the same thing. Once you approve the money to go into the fund balance, it's one thing.
Sorry.
Again, you don't understand that when you move ARPA funds into the fund balance, they're one thing. They're no longer separated.
They didn't go to the, they didn't go into the fund balance. It went into the general ledger as, as losses is what you said. It went to capital losses is what you, those were your words verbatim.
Correct, which your revenue losses is part of your fund balance. That's where all the money is located. And, and again, I'm sorry that we're in a different situation that other communities.
Because I don't forget things. And so when you start acting like something else was said or happened, I said, Tony, no, like, that didn't happen.
Council chair, you appropriated the money for revenue loss. We have motions approving that. You then appropriated money for the golf course to come out of fund balance.
Let me tell you what we did.
From those revenue loss funds.
Let me tell you what we did. You brought somebody here that we paid them eighty thousand dollars to tell us that what you need to do is, if you don't wanna have restricted money, put ten million dollars here. And then you could play around with the fourteen million dollars that are restricted that you have to use in a certain way. So when you, so, so what I don't want you to do is, well, you guys approved, you, no, what, the recommendation that you guys made that yourself, the people that were brought forward by the administration and the mayor was, this, and, and Tom once spoke about this. We specifically said, we can be able to use the money however we wanna use it if we put it here.
Which we did.
Okay, time out. Please, hang on.
Correct.
So what, you, what, now you see like how you're spinning things, but you put it in fund balance, you put it in revenue losses, we did it in here. This is what revenue losses, this is what fund balances. No, well, let me tell you, anytime you gave us something that we approved, you're right. You guys came back and threw in an account number, assuming it's coming from the general ledger, but really it was coming back from the fund balance. And it wasn't to the end that you guys were using fund balance money that we found out that there was no more money because our treasurer told us that. Never came from you guys. There, there was a hidden secret.
Council chair, you get monthly reports from the treasurer and the controllers department. And again, yes, you did unrestrict the funds and then you provided salary increases and you knew negotiations for everybody where that money got allocated. So again, that's where your money went.
Negotiation for one year is what we did. We gave a one-year that, 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 that was done by our former HR director that also told police officers that if you can go four days on and you work, I'm gonna give you four full days, any after day after that is considered overtime.
That is not accurate. I can give you the salary increases and all of the back, back pay that we gave to all of the police officers with regards to that.
Seven-hundred thousand dollars, that's what it was.
It's a lot more than that, council chair. But, um, again, regardless, the city has, the city has historically been in a deficit. The ARPA funds did balance that out due to the revenue loss for the years that we had that funding available. But historically, even before that, we were still at a deficit. And again, I shared with the council, David Sabuda's presentation where it showed the trend, we can create that again. But it is not something new. It is a situation that the city has historically been facing.
I'm gonna quote you.
I'm sorry that ARPA funds have run out.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna quote you what David Sabuda said, Mariana. David, David Sabuda said, you guys are overspending. He didn't say the city has historically been in a deficit. He said, you guys are overspending. The management is overspending and asking the council to approve it.
And he showed that in a chart that showed the historical trend of how we were overspending.
No, he told us where we would be today. That's, that's what he did.
He did.
He did. He talked about where we would be in twenty-twenty-five and that you guys would, you guys would deplete your fund balance. You guys also had a conversation with, with Plant Moran and said you guys need to get a hold of things.
Correct.
And, and, and it was not said to you guys one time in private meetings, it was said to you multiple times.
Correct.
You guys failed to, you, it fell in deaf ears. Nobody took control of it. Management did not do that. I, I, I don't want you to keep blaming the council, Mariana.
I'm, I'm not blaming the council. I'm just saying you have been notified of every expense that has happened in the city.
Hasn't the administration taken, uh, a course?
No, we have not. I have not been made, we've not been made. We don't know what, what, what contracts were happening that were given out to any directors at the, in the beginning. We had no idea. They were hired in and it was just used. It's not true. No, no, how about this, even the controller that got paid the one-fifteen, it was Cindy or whatever, the, the lady, one of the controls, cause we had seven, Cindy. That pay raise was given to her without our approval and then it was added to the budget the following year. I said, she wasn't at one-fifteen and the mayor said, yeah, yeah, she was. You guys approved it in a closed session. I said, you can't make an approval in a closed session, you can't even talk about that in a closed session unless it was talked in here and nothing like that was ever talked about.
So again, from what I recall.
So, so spending, we don't know. We don't know when the spending that takes place. Cutting down trees and then saying, here's the bill. That's another way of saying, so that, the, I can give you a lot of examples where you guys spent money and it didn't come to the council.
I, I don't believe that's accurate because we have to come to council for everything, but I understand you're concerned, council chair.
So false.
All right, let's move on.
Let's move.
I told myself I didn't wanna do this today. I didn't wanna do this. I just want to, please, nothing from the audience, Angela, please. I'm gonna have to ask you guys to leave if we continue that. Please, nothing from the audience. Thank you.
Okay. Should we move on to page thirty?
Yes.
Yes.
I just want us to, for the record. This money here that should have been put in a restricted fund, administration failed to put it in a restricted fund and that's why the golf course floors are not being, uh, concrete's not being done. Not on the council. You guys failed to put it in a restricted fund. That's your job. Continue. If you want us to micromanage you guys and making sure that things are being done the right way, then we should have done that. But you guys always want to have leeway. You wanted your leeway. Look what happens when we, when we didn't hold, we didn't put our.
Council chair, that's not how a budget works. Last year, the eight-hundred thousand was proposed to be put in the budget. It was declined.
Because you guys were in a deficit.
Correct. So we're in the same situation again, so it's not budgeted right now, so it's not in the restricted account because it's not budgeted.
We gave you a balanced budget and you still operate at, at a deficit.
Correct. And you know the reasons why. We've had multiple meetings about that.
No, we have not.
We've had at least four meetings about overtime, which is why we're over.
Whose, whose fault is that? The council?
No, no, council chair, it's much more complicated than that. It's the salaries, it's the lack of being able to hire fast enough. It's the people that are off, it's the, uh, dangerous emergencies that we have.
You blame it on the council.
We didn't liquidate people out, Mr. Sob.
Thank you very much. Let's continue. Now we're on page. I'm just like, now we're on cable.
Go ahead, man.
Page thirty-one. Cable TV department, we changed the pipe capital improvement to three-hundred thousand dollars based on your request, council chair, to invest more in technology.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In cameras and things like that.
Yes. There have been no changes to page thirty-two, public information. There have been no changes to page thirty-three for general government pension. And there have been no changes to page thirty-four on Act Three-Forty-five pension. Any questions on general fund?
Where are you now?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-four and then we're moving on to thirty-five.
No, no changes.
No changes till forty. Okay, now thirty-six?
Now we're gonna be, yes, so thirty-five, no changes. Thirty-six, no changes. That is a CDBG budget. It is actually gonna be approved in October, I believe. And then you'll get the budget from the CDBG director for that. Page thirty-seven, no changes.
So page thirty-eight, can you remind me what's that transfer to TIFAGA?
They were funds.
Mariana can.
They weren't collecting or something.
Uh, this is to pay for the, um, Justice Center bond.
Yes.
How come it's out of the building fund? Our building authority?
I don't know that was budgeted before my time, but I believe it's because of the bond and because it is a building, a new building, it was created for that particular pro, purpose. So. Tifa pays the majority of it. We only pay sixty thousand of it.
Page thirty-nine, we are gonna be moving into major streets. This is gonna be the revenue for major streets, which is five million, seven-hundred-one-thousand, no changes. And then the expenses, the, the one change we have is for traffic services, which is the non-motorized expenses. We increased it to three-hundred-seventy-eight thousand based on council chair's recommendation.
Page forty, can you remind me what's that, what was that for?
That was council chair wanted to invest more in non-motorized expenses like crosswalks, street signs and lights.
That was from the, uh, local, uh.
Yes, and then there's one for major streets. There's one on major streets, one on local streets. Uh, so page forty-one, there's no changes. And then page forty-two is where the other change for a local street, traffic services, which is again, non-motorized for the local streets, the side streets, uh, that was increased to three-hundred-fifty thousand.
So that's another three-fifty?
Yeah.
Yeah. Three-fifty on each one. So major streets is for like, streets like Beach Daily, local streets is for the side streets. And then for page forty-three, the MIDC grant revenue, uh, that increased to offset the expenses in MIDC, which pays for the legal fees for the court, I believe. Yeah, court services. There have been no changes to page forty-four. No changes to page forty-five. No changes for page forty-six. No changes for page forty-seven. No changes for page forty-eight. Page forty-nine and fifty also have no changes, which is the tropical immobilization fund. Page fifty-one, there have been no changes. And page fifty-two, there have been no changes. Page fifty-three, we have the state grants, that's for, I believe, the safe streets, that's the fire station, right? Yeah, so that is the fire station, uh, expense, which is also offset in the revenue.
Was that from, uh, was that a federal grant for the design?
That's actually the revenue, yes.
From Rashida.
And then in the capital outlay section, we have the five-hundred thousand to offset that revenue. So the revenue on, the revenue on page fifty-three is offset by the expense on page fifty-four. Page fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
Oh, wait, the council chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Manny.
No problem. I don't wanna, because I know you like speaking about the waterfront a lot, so I wanna make sure you're aware.
You can go ahead. So, so what was the five-twenty-one, five-twenty-eight line added here again?
So this is the CDBGR disaster recovery, uh, grant. Uh, we are going out to bid for, uh, and I believe that's the state or federal money is gonna be paying for it. This is the revenue portion and then.
Sorry. Hi, um, if you recall, during the floods of twenty-twenty-one, uh, they opened grants for different projects for flooding. So the CDBG disaster recovery portion of it. So we were awarded two grants, one for infrastructure, where we're replacing two bridges along the Eacridge Creek. And one for the planning for flood mitigation. So that's what these two grants are, um, under the Water CDBGDR. Again, they've already been approved by council. We've already gone out for bids. The projects are about to begin. They're offset through the revenues. So this is the revenue side of things, what you're seeing right now. Then you also have a new line item, or sorry, not new because it was always there, but a new amount that was budgeted, which is the five-nine-two-zero-zero-zero-six-three-six, which is the FEMA grant reimbursements. There are four FEMA grants that are currently being worked on by the city. There's the flooding, um, scoping work through engineering and the stormwater conveyance grant through engineering. Again, we have approval for these grants from the council. They're ninety percent matches. And then we have the two home demolition grants, uh, for.
Who's working on these, by the way? Is this Plant Moran or is this our city engineer?
So it's a combination of both. A lot of the design was done through Plant Moran. Again, we went out for bids for the CDBGDR, so I'm not a hundred percent sure who ended up getting it. I can get back to you with that.
Sorry, Mariana, before we move on, can you go back to line five-twenty-eight? I'm not understanding the ARPA, uh, ARPA fund, eleven million, five-twenty-three, so what's that?
Sorry, are we going back up?
Yeah, the first, like, almost the first line.
Okay, sorry, yeah, I didn't highlight that one because I think that one was. Okay, sorry. Yeah, I didn't highlight that one because I think that one was already there.
It wasn't before, no.
Sorry. It wasn't there before?
No, it wasn't.
Okay. So we should have highlighted it yellow. I apologize. That's the American Rescue Plan funding that was allocated for the water main replacements.
So this is out of the 14 million?
Correct.
Yeah, but we only used seven, and then you guys, they were gonna give us X amount of dollars. We only had seven remaining, remember? We were talking about square, we were talking about square meters. Councilman Saab was in Lebanon, and we used 7,300. There was not 11 million.
So there's two portions of this grant. There is a $3 million match for the DWSRF portion of the water main replacement, which is covered through the match through the DWSRF. And then there's a second motion that was for the 7 million for the remainder of the water.
Did we get the money from the DWS? Did we receive the money?
We've been doing drawdowns, so yes, we've received about 2 million in the account. Yes. So because it's a state revolving fund, it's not gonna be showing in your revenues as they show up. They're gonna be in a liability account, which...
Because it's being paid to fix, and I get it.
Correct. So the money has come in. It's in that liability account. Unfortunately, it's not really clear in your budget because it's not part of your budget. But the money is hitting the bank.
Do you remember what the number was?
Sorry, I just wanted to show you on the general ledger where the liabilities are, which we can always pull that number whenever you ask us to. So yes, so that's what the ARPA 11 million revenues is for.
We're using this as our revenue. If we eliminated 3 million of that, 4 million, we'd be in a bigger pickle.
Again, this is restricted money for ARPA that could only be used on water infrastructure projects.
Yep, we got it.
So yes, so far, we've received 2,417,146.48 in reimbursements from ARPA, I mean, from DWSRF.
Thank you.
And then there's also the CWSRF. And for the CWSRF, we've received 183,063.23.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions with the FEMA and grants?
No.
No? Okay.
So we dropped the sale of new meters to 500,000. And then we dropped the water bill penalties, expected income revenue to be 450,000. And then we removed reimbursement from MMRMA since that's not expected this year.
MMRMA, you removed? Okay.
Page fifty-six. We calculated the actual cost of the uniform contract we have with the universe. It's expected to be somewhere around 13,000. We put 15,000 just in case there's any lost replacement or damaged clothing that needs to be repaired, additional cost.
This is for clothing?
713.000, page fifty-six.
Water admin and general, okay.
And then...
Do we need 15,000?
They need 15,000, yes.
Okay, thank you.
GPW Director said that...
Yes, that is correct.
So down here, the FEMA grant, these are the expenses related to the revenues that were budgeted for. So they're offset by 90% of the revenues. And same thing with the CDBGDR. We actually have bid those, put those out for bid, and we have the companies ready for selection. But those are actually selected by the state, since it's their money. And then ego expenditures, that's 387,835. Mariana, can you speak more about that one?
Sorry, let me open this one up. I think it's another grant.
Shut up, it's a computer.
So repairs and maintenance, we removed. And then we added it to the 932 account, which is, that account should be in.
Which one is that? I'm sorry?
931, there used to be 35,000. But we actually have, we're only using the 932 accounts going forward since you don't need two different...
You need the 931 and the 932?
Sorry about that.
You're saying you don't need the 931, 932, you're only using the 932?
Yes, only 932 for all budgets, just to make it...
And you combine it's 35,000?
And then page fifty-seven?
Hang on, one second. She, I'm gonna wait, I'm Mariana. I just also want you to know, if we're combining 31 and 32, it actually comes up to 34,500. I mean, I know it's just an additional 500. I just want your math to be correct because you highlighted 19,500 and then 15,000, which adds up to 34,500. But when you, when you're looking at this line item, this line item number is off by 500.
Would you like to put it at 34,500?
I mean, the math is wrong.
Understood.
My question is, how did this math, how was it able to become wrong? Because...
I think it was just wrong.
Because the total sum at the end...
There's a lot more change than just that amount.
You know, I'm just doing 31 and 32. Which adds up to 3450, right? 34,500.
35. It was 20 and 15.
20 and 15. The projected activity for this year was 19,500.
Am I tripping?
Yeah. If you look at the old one, they had 20 and 15 separate. So we combine them?
Be 35.
To be 35.
I see where you're seeing the...
Where'd you get the 500 from? Add these two numbers together. 19,500 and 15,000.
Yeah, but this is the projected activity for this year. We're talking about the budget for next year. This is for this year.
Okay. I do see where...
I can.
No, but thank you for catching that.
So basically, that 19,500, we made it 20 for next year.
So, Mariana, did you find it?
Yeah, it's, sorry, it's right here. It's the State High Water Infrastructure Grant. Sorry, we had so many ego grants, it took me a second to find it. But that's what that expenditure is for. It will also be offset by a revenue. I believe we missed the revenue for that one, so I might double check. It's a 26% match grant for us, but the rest of it is getting reimbursed, and I don't recall seeing it there. So we'll add it.
Okay.
Any other questions on page fifty-six? Page fifty-seven, we made changes to the water project that we are currently undertaking to match the expected expenditures for the project totals. Any questions?
So how come they were added now? Are these grants too?
Yes, those are, they're half bond, half grants.
Why are you adding it to the budget?
Because we have the contracts already, and they're starting to do the work. So it needs to be in the budget in order for us to pay them.
Did they come before it, before us?
Yes. So again, this were the ones that you went out for bonds, Patrick.
Yeah, we went out for bonds. I know that, but I don't know, we were awarded a contractor, yeah?
Yes. So that was part of the bond. It was the agreement. We had to have the bond in order for the agreement of the grants to come through.
That's correct.
So yes, all of these were awarded. All of these were bid. The contracts are already in place. This is the 2 million that I just showed you in reimbursements. We're already getting money back from them. But again, unless we spend the money, we won't get the money in the reimbursements.
Okay. Thank you.
Just so everybody's aware, CSOL 41 and CSOL 42 are taken on by Pemar Enterprises. The water meter replacement is taken on by Ferguson and their subcontractor, Vepo. And then the water main replacement is done by Bitigir.
So how come you have, like, specials that CSOL 41, you didn't budget for it last time, and now only, you did 51,000 last time?
Because that's...
So again, the request was there, but for some reason, Shannon forgot to put them in. So we're just correcting to also put it in the requested item, not, I mean, in the budgeted item, not just the requested.
But these are all approved, you said, right?
Correct. Again, it's ongoing project. And they will carry on for future years as well. They will not all be completed this fiscal year.
Did we get any MMRMA refunds this year, or were those eaten up? Because I noticed that we took those out. And as usual, we get like, we get a refund of close to a million dollars.
So the fiscal year we're currently in, we did receive it. For the next fiscal year, I don't believe we're going to be able to get it. Because as you recall, we've already exhausted our minimum amount that has to be put into the MMRMA fund.
How do we plan on revenue, bringing back that revenue of the million dollars that we're losing?
So again, historically, that hasn't really been a revenue, except for the last three years where we've been getting it. But it's not a consistent thing, right? It kind of pays off the insurance itself. So you get 1 million, you pay 1 million. It covers what our insurance is.
I know. So now we're gonna be...
Any other questions on page fifty-seven? No?
I get it, because a lawsuit, but it was a revenue that we, now we're having to pay the additional million and not get, or it doesn't pay itself off. We're not planning ourselves, we're not planning or preparing for that. Instead, we're just saying we're gonna get all these other different revenues, and we're gonna be able to make up for it. When the reality is, we're probably not going to. All right, let's continue.
Page fifty-eight, there are no changes. Page fifty-nine, there are no changes. Page sixty, there are no changes. Page sixty-one, there are no changes. Then we move on to the library fund, which is page sixty-two. The reimbursement from MMRMA, 10,000 was removed.
We're not getting nothing.
So for page sixty-three, the line items weren't highlighted by accident. However, the salaries changed.
Which page?
So the salaries changed. I do know the telephones, 853.000, was updated to 12,000. And then the capital outlay was reduced, which is 981.000. There might be a couple line items. I'm just having Mariana check.
Salary line item, the contractual services was increased by 15,000. The dues and memberships was increased by 10,000. And the capital outlay was reduced by 30,000 to offset all of those changes by the director. And again, there will be an additional change in salaries to increase his salary to the 85,000 from 82. So there will be an additional 3,000.
Where it says, Fund 738, how come it went down to 148?
For which line item?
It's under the line, it says net of revenues appropriation, Fund 738?
Yes.
It says 148,700.
That means they are not in the deficit. Then for their fund specifically...
I don't know, for some reason, I have here 157.
That was the prior budget.
The prior...
There was about like...
You guys had 169 before. And then I, we have a scratch through it, and it says 157, 887.
With the increase in the salaries and the other line items that didn't offset exactly, so it went down to 148. Do we have any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
You give me the final draw number. I know I have it written down here, but I'm just trying to get my papers here. You give me the final draw number of revenues that we believe that are coming in.
Sorry about that.
The revenue, the revenues.
The total revenues?
Yeah.
The current or expected for the next fiscal year?
Twenty-six, twenty-five.
Twenty, twenty-five, twenty.
Are we saying 69,321,000?
What page is that? Okay.
53 million. And we're projected to spend 59?
No, we projected to be spending 63. It would be about 63,110.
What do you see, what do you see there?
That would be on page...
Three.
I think it's gonna be like page forty-seven.
Page three, estimated revenues.
So... It's page thirty-four, where it shows you the total appropriations for expenditures, which it's going to be 63,71702.
Oh.
63 million, about 1.
No, this is the... Oh, right, right, sorry. So the changes we made today are not included there, which it's all of these, if you want to do the math.
About a 40,000 change.
Okay. And let me ask you, how much is remaining in our fund balance after this?
Sorry. So in the last one, we had 80,251 remaining. And with the changes, let us do
What's nine mil? No, you have like 40,000 more left in fund balance.
So did you do decrease?
That means if one, if one extra dollar was spent from the budget, this goes over on their, on their overtime.
So how much do you think the fringes are gonna be?
There has to be revenue brought into this.
Probably not even having water here. You can afford to get water to the council?
Not even cleaning the desks. Get the desk.
All right, I can live with that.
I mean, they can, they can work on it. You want it right now? You want the numbers right now? Because I don't want it to be off. I mean, I already know what it's gonna be. Very tight.
So it's gonna be approximately 32...
30,251.
30,251, sorry.
I mean, once you have the final number...
Yeah, we have to do the bike and numbers, so those are a little tricky.
You might go into page 63. Can you explain this to me? When you go at the bottom, it says appropriation of all funds, 157. Estimated revenues above is 148 and you have a deficit of 9 million. How does that, can you explain that to me?
So that is because the water fund is expended. The water fund is expending more than they're bringing in in revenue. But it is a enterprise and a fund that needs infrastructure improvements. So you're not always gonna be net revenues in that fund.
I'm sorry, say that again, I'm not...
So for the water fund, on a year to, on a fiscal year-to-year basis, you're not always looking to match revenues to expenses because the whole purpose of the water fund is to keep maintaining infrastructure. And sometimes in years, you're gonna be expending more than you bring in in revenue.
Okay. You get it?
Mariana, I want you to also know, just on historic data, for the last 10 years since 2012, we received 1 million, 1 million dollars from MMRMA. And it hasn't been the last three years. So it hasn't been just like, oh, something we received for the last three years. We've actually been getting it since 2012. I just want, I just wanted to correct you on that.
If you want us to add it, we can, but...
We're not getting it.
You can. So again, like when they proposed the new numbers, they will still send you a letter asking you, you would like to get it back into the general fund or if you would like to keep it in their fund. The problem is, if you don't keep it in their fund, you're still gonna have to pay it so that we're consistent with their limits of what the minimum we have to have in their account.
Well, we're gonna have to pay regardless because you're not getting anything this year.
We are getting it. We are getting a reimbursement this year. I'm just not accounting for it because I recommend that the administration keeps it in the fund that we need for MMRMA because they're already requesting for additional money to be put into that account.
So much?
About 30 more lawsuits awaiting.
That's scary. Okay. Well, that was our public hearing presentation. So now I'm gonna go ahead and open this up to the public. You got... Do we give a time frame? You do? Okay. What is it? Let's go. You know what? I'm not, I'm not gonna hold anybody. You have unlimited time to speak. I think this is, any taxpayer deserves to be able to talk about how their money is being spent. And I don't think we should be deserving to limit anybody. I am gonna start with in-person here. I see, uh... Go ahead. Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. Realistically, I'm gonna give you five minutes.
See if we can get it done in that amount of time.
All right.
I don't expect going much longer. Rachel Lapointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights.
Thank you.
I would recommend, and I think this kind of happened last year, where we were kind of reviewing some changes before the public hearing starts. And just to respect the public's time, I would ask that maybe you guys schedule that for like the day before or a little bit earlier, so that if the public hearing starts at 6, a member of the public can reasonably expect that they would be speaking within an amount of time from 6 o'clock.
I just wanna pause your, I'm gonna, I just wanna, I wanna respond to you, Rachel. There wasn't really back and forth. Unfortunately, the council didn't receive it until this morning.
I agree.
So like, you can't, there's, there's nothing I can do.
Agreed, that ideally next year, we'll also be able to get those updated changes a little bit faster because that's the next part of it. It's not just on you guys. It's the whole team thing, right?
Yeah. And I just wanna make clear that I emailed them on Saturday, said, hey, Saturday, we still haven't gotten any information. Like, I'm waiting, I wanna review this. I don't wanna review this an hour before I come in. But unfortunately, we didn't get it until today at 11, 12 o'clock.
And it wasn't on the public website. I believe the clerk's office sent out an email around dinnertime-ish, which I get, you guys are extremely busy. Like, this is a big project. There's a lot going on. There's a lot of other tasks, normal tasks that you guys have to do too. So I get it, but maybe we should maybe schedule the public hearing a week later in May. Look at what the timing might be, that we could give a little extra time there.
Don't the public hearing have to be the first week of May, Mayor? I believe... Yes, yeah.
Whatever, however, we need to look at it for the calendar for next year to maybe give that, make sure we have that space, right? So that nobody has to be stressed out, nobody has to be scrambling to try and understand what's going on. But to some extent, even if we had had time, to me, it feels like the budget this year is a wish, a dream, a hope and a prayer right now. It's, it's a wonderful idea. I don't know that it's entirely doable. It feels like we're flying by the seat of our pants. It doesn't feel like there's an actual plan that we're looking at anything long-term. We're not looking at anything, it doesn't seem like we're talking about things that we can really change. Ways that we can change to bring in revenue that aren't just grants. Grants are for one-time projects. We need to bring in sustainable revenue, right? Like, I don't know if we need to make some online courses or something and start selling them and get some, you know, revenue streams going. I don't know what we gotta do here, but we gotta do something. So, um, to me, I also feel like, and this is something that city council, you guys are gonna have to look at as we have these different contract negotiations with the unions. It feels like we've been prioritizing getting everybody's salaries to comparable with other cities, without looking at the long-term future of those decisions. We haven't looked at what those are gonna cost us moving forward, or even a full picture of what that immediate cost is. So you guys have been making decisions that just have been, yeah, we wanna get everybody equal to where our other cities are, but we can't afford it. And we didn't consider at that time, okay, if we get up to that point, how are we raising the income? It doesn't feel like that's happened at all. So I would love to see maybe some study sessions coming up soon. You guys discussing some different options for revenue streams. I'll toss a few ideas your way. Pilot agreements, perhaps with Vista Maria or other nonprofits in the city that use a considerable amount of city resources. Maybe we can discuss with them, come up with an agreement where they can kind of chip in a little bit to our bottom line, our general fund, so that we can cover, you know, police call expenses. If they're making a lot of calls, what's that average cost per call to the city? If they're a nonprofit, they're not paying property taxes, we're getting no income from them, right? I think honestly, we need to look at the Warren Valley contract and see what we can do with them to renegotiate that, to make it better for everybody. I think it, there's ways to make it better for our leases and our concessionaire and for us. Because we are a community and we're a family. And I think we do wanna work together and see it successful and bringing in money both for them and for us. And I think there's ways to do it, but we've just gotta get creative and sit down at a table and negotiate it. And really, the biggest thing to me is actually enforcing our own ordinances that are already written. Our business license rules, for example, say that if the renewal is 60 days late, they're supposed to restart as a new license. We don't generally enforce that. We've been giving a lot of grace. But we can't be nice and be bankrupt. So we might need to start saying, hey, if you're late on that business license, in the past, we were fine with you just paying the late fee, but now we're gonna make you pay the full new fee. There's other fees and fines I'm sure we could look at to raise revenue there too. I'd love to see study sessions on that. We should have all those, every single license, all of that we need to be looking at. Building permits as well. And I believe council chair, you and I had a funny little conversation. I think you said that we need a permit to replace a shingle or a toilet, something like that. That's unenforceable. We can't enforce that. There's no way. So you guys need to look at those, probably with the planning commission, those ordinances, to say, let's knock off the stuff that's unenforceable so that we can actually enforce what is important, the stuff that's gonna have high value and bring in permits. Because right now, if everybody goes, oh, it's too much of a hassle to deal with Dearborn Heights, I'm not gonna even look into it. We're missing out on a lot of permit revenue, right? And then the assessed fees never go up because that was never reported. We have no idea. So those little things, there's things that we can still do. We've been making improvements. We've been dealing with a lot of challenges and like complications, right? But I think there's things that you guys can do and look at this year to make big changes. And the last one I would love to see is to look to our, maybe, upper-level federal things. I'd love to see a finance oversight council committee that meets with the comptroller's office in the administration once a month, goes, two or three of you, goes over that budget to actual report, says what GL lines are getting close to getting over or looking a little shaky. And then you guys at that next council meeting come back and tell the rest of the council, these are the things we're keeping an eye on right now. And the public knows, oh, these are the things we're keeping an eye on now. And then if you guys go, oh, all of a sudden we're in the hole, this parking lot is gonna cost a million dollars. Then you can start talking then about, okay, what are we looking for? We're looking for grants. We're looking for what? Are we doing a garage sale of, you know, city stuff in the basement? What are we doing, right? So having that monthly committee meeting might really help you guys feel more secure in knowing what's going on with the budget and save you time then on the budget sessions next year. Thank you.
Great, great, uh, great conversation, Rachel. I agree with you on a lot of those things. And I think this is the first thing that I spoke about in the beginning is, we're spending all this money, but our revenue is like right here, and it's constantly been like this. There's never even been like a level playing field where we're just like, all right, we're breaking even every single year. We're always outspending in revenue. And you're right, grants are great, but how do we find in? And, you know, but going back to like you saying, you know, people that don't renew their license. Let's just say these people say, you know what? Screw Dearborn Heights, I don't wanna renew it. And then now you don't, now you can't capture that tax. Now you're losing more money. And it's like, do you wanna penalize people and potentially harm your, you know, the future of the city? So like, you gotta really be very careful on some of those things. You're right, but I mean, let's just say you won't even run up to $300, right? Is that really gonna be enough and sufficient to be able to say, you know, 50 businesses, we got them for an additional $300, like? We need to start thinking large and bigger and how to bring in more revenue. And I agree. Maybe, you know, we can look at some parts of the course where we can bring in more revenue. I mean, you know, maybe like, I know we do the festival every year, the Spear Festival brings, generates money. Let's do one of them, let's do three of them. Let's do five of them. People love it. You know, I think, I think the Dearborn Homecoming Festival said like, they generated close to almost a million dollars. And the best part about it is they have all sponsors that pay for all this stuff. Not even coming from the general fund. Why are we not coming after big donors and saying, give us money? I mean, if Ford is giving $50 million to Dearborn, I mean, $50,000 to Dearborn, I promise you they'll give Dearborn Heights 10,000. Somebody's just gotta ask. And now guess what? We can put that more money into more events for our, for our community. But the truth is, just kind of going back a little bit to what Rachel said, I'm, I'm actually very scared to hear that we only have $40,000 in a fund balance.
30.
30, 32,000 or less in a fund balance. That means if any car breaks through DPW right now, we can't fix it. We, we can't do, we are completely tied. Truth is, and I don't wanna keep pointing back and forth, back and forth, because I'm trying to like, you know, we're trying to get away from that, but three years ago, we had so much money. We were, we were rich. And I just feel like we didn't capitalize on that. Instead, we continue to put it revenue loss, revenue loss, revenue loss, revenue loss. And here you come in, then this year's gonna, you know, 25, 26 is gonna have to be a very tough. And it's on the directors. You guys need to do your part. Because we, like, kinda like what Rachel here said, a lot of hopes, wishes, prayers in this budget. You need to pray that, I mean, we're gonna need you, Renee. A lot of praying here because this budget has to go as, as you guys hypothetically speak. Reality is, the last two years, you guys failed to meet those type of revenues.
There's, there's one item, piggybacking on what she said, that we could charge a lot more for the towers. We've got about four towers. We've never raised the rates that they give us for the towers in the city. We're way undercharging.
What towers?
A lot of those are 30-year contracts.
You gotta be kidding.
Yeah. But some of them are due, and we're looking into what the new revenue streams are going to be. I know that...
On that outer drive?
They have to go out for bids to see what the current actual costs for it are. But that is a revenue increase that we're looking into as we renew new contracts for that. But yeah, a lot of them were stuck in the same amount for many years.
They're going to a different tick now.
Okay. Uh, any other, any other one else in the audience? Hey, do ma'am, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. I'm gonna give you five minutes.
Five minutes, wow. Renee Murna, Annapolis, Dearborn Heights. So, um, just a couple of notes. But I'm really, I'm really excited the way this is going because I have been praying for the city. I've been praying about the crime, but I need to know, is it going down, shifting anywhere? Is it getting better in the north, south, east, west?
Honestly, this is our budget hearing.
Okay, well, the, the area that, that we're in right now, I'm always praying for wisdom for this area, so, you know.
Thank you so much.
So, so, one thing I wanted to ask Mariana, you know, how's it feel being thrown under the bus? Like, you guys are brutal throwing her under the bus, you know? I, I'm not gonna say anything about what she did say or what she didn't say, but I remember something about, about city council owning the, owning, when I first started here a while ago. But, you know, I, I'm not gonna put my word on it. But the thing is, be, be real careful because she can pull up the video. And it'll all be there, whatever she said or didn't say. Same thing on, on your end, you know, the video's there. So anyway, I just felt bad for them. It seemed like they were both, they were getting thrown under the bus a lot. It got agitated here a little while, for a little bit, and I understand that. And it has to, it has to, to touch a nerve. And that's what I've been praying for, that all this stuff will start surfacing so that the city council realize their shortcomings in following through on whatever they're voting on. And also the people that are accountable will be held accountable. So this is actually a blessing to see you guys get agitated. I'm sorry that it feels bad because it does feel ugly, but it's for a purpose. And the purpose is, everybody has to own their part. Including the citizens. How's that? The other thing is, the ones you, they were talking about the licenses or something that were coming due. And, and council chair, I'm learning to say council chair. The only thing that, that I really disagree with you is when you say, well, if I raise it, they're gonna leave. If, basically what you just said is, if I enforce the law, they're gonna leave. That's what I heard in my ears. If I enforce the ordinance, well, what if they leave? Well, if they leave, that's it. Somebody else will be there, something will happen. Listen, I think what, what people are doing is they're leaving God out of the equation here. And he's got an answer, but he's not really ready to share it with you guys until the stuff comes out and everybody owns their part. There's an answer. There's a big answer for the city. There's a huge answer for the city, for revenue to be on top again. But God can't bless like chaos and animosity and, and blaming. He cannot bless that, you know? Sorry, but this isn't, this is my belief. I think this is going on track perfectly. I think that, that you guys are doing what you're supposed to be doing. Things are being surfaced that are supposed to be surfaced. Now, if we could just control the way that we respond when something comes up. Yes, it's frustrating because the citizens are blaming you and then, you know, and then it goes back on them. Everybody's, everybody has a part to it. So I just wanna say, you guys, you know, don't be frustrated. I know it's hard to not be frustrated with what's going on. Nobody's blaming you. You got a job just like everybody else, you know? We love you. You're not hated by everybody. It's the fact that it's, this needs to happen to have a clean city. And there will be an answer. I believe it. Thank you.
By the way, do you mind, council chair? By the way, ma'am, we did not throw Mariana under the bus, but it happened. The administration elected Mariana to represent them. So that's it. We love, we love Mariana and we do appreciate all the hard work that she does. And that's a big thing that she is here representing the administration. So thank you, Mariana, just to put it on record.
Thank you. Hey, do ma'am, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. You have five minutes.
Margaret King, Mayfair Street, Dearborn Heights. This is just heartbreaking to see my city in shambles. Finance-wise. I don't know what to say. I just know that you allocated money for Joey and clearly it's not here and that kills me, Mo. It breaks my heart. A grant writer would be great. It would be great. It would help us out. And I think the cost of the grant writer and then the cost of what that grant writer would bring in would definitely help us. I don't know what else to say. You okay?
Just something else came to my mind that we didn't even budget for.
Well, it's just an option. All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Margaret.
And we've discussed it before, what happens a lot of times is each department...
And we've discussed it before, what happens a lot of times is each department has to, somebody with expertise in that area, fire, parks and recreation, has to write for the grant. So just to have a general grant writer, it's not often how it works.
Alright. Hi, do ma'am, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. You got five minutes, actually four minutes or fifty-five seconds.
Why do I get less? Angela Venegas, Dearborn Heights, Dwight Street. Sorry you're mad at me, Mo, but like everybody else here, pretty angry tonight. Just to, uh, know, and I'd like someone to answer me, since Mariana's been, is chief of staff, um, where's our mayor, and how long has he been absent?
Gone since last Monday.
Okay, so who's running the city right now?
Chief of staff.
Okay.
The mayor is checking his emails every day and responding to things as well. So he is active, just he's not here physically. But also to put it on the record, the mayor hasn't taken a vacation in the five years that he's been here. And it's not unusual for an individual to take a week off.
Yeah, well, he hasn't been at a council meeting in over six months, so that's no excuse. But anyways, wanna bring up a situation yesterday. Mo, you know, I've had a neighbor who put up a roof on their house, and I ended up probably in the building department, because there's no permit on their house, and ended up having to get a hold of ordinance. And then I called the mayor's office, and Mariana was on, in a meeting, and, but it did get taken care of today. But this is another way our city's losing revenue. We got people doing work, aren't pulling permits. I personally own a dog. My dog, permit for my dog, his license has been eight dollars since I've lived here twenty-five years. I mean, I think eight dollars, he's a male dog, neutered, you know? I think those fees can go up. I mean, for the time it takes you guys to make a license, to spend a stamp, to mail it back, to have somebody process, it's gotta just be breaking even, seriously. There's, there's things that, you know, put it to twenty bucks. There's, there's just a lot of things in the city that just aren't being taken care of. I mean, here's another thing. How many council meetings did we have about all the properties that we were gonna sell here in Dearborn Heights? That we had real estate people here, you guys had study sessions. We spent so much time here, we formed a committee. You're on it, you're on it, I'm on it, Lynn's on it, Zuhair's on it. We, we, we can't even get those properties in order. You guys are supposed to meet with a title co- no, it just seems like nothing is getting accomplished. You know, we, we talk about garbage day, all the people parking in the streets. We got people parking on their, on their lawns on garbage day, we're allowing all this. And there's just so many more things that could get accomplished. And it all starts with our police department, they need more officers. I don't care what we have to do, and I was talking with the chief. Maybe we can assess twenty-five dollars per household on everybody's taxes, just so we can get some officers here. We, we need our police department. There's something, we, we have to do something. Without the enforcement, without the laws, things are falling apart. And it just isn't about administrative things. There's, there's just way too many things that are being let go. When you got the neighborhoods and houses so full of blight, you, you welcome the, the, the vermin from outside to come in. It looks terrible. We need to start doing something. And I don't care, you guys as a council, and hopefully we're gonna have a new mayor, and things are gonna get better, because the past four, five years, whatever is under this administration, we had a police department. And I don't care what anybody says, you guys wanna call it the good old boys or whatever. We had a police department that people, you couldn't get in here. Our police department was well-known to be one of the best police departments in Dearborn Heights. And it's falling apart, nobody even wants to come here. We gotta do something, you guys. We gotta get law and order back in our city, and, and, and we gotta get the community involved. We're very diverse, but if we all come together as one, different ideas, different approaches of things, I believe things can be better. But I think it's gonna start with a new mayor. And, that's all I gotta say, and God bless the city and hope things get better.
Thank you. You're welcome. Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, I'll take it to Zoom. We're gonna start with Nargis. You can unmute her, madam clerk. Hi, do ma'am, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. I'm sorry if I gave away your name.
Okay, um, Nargis Salawadi, Inkster Road, um, Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, I, I think Rachel made a lot of good points, um, mentioning the courses, for example. Um, I, I'd be, I'm happy to be a part of that committee. Um, you got a lot of people that are very talented in the city, very passionate, love their city, and, um, wanna see funding come in, of course. Um, you, you mentioned the Spirit Festival, I think that's great, but I think also we can, um, maybe focus on a different demographic, like, for example, like, millennials, I know a big thing for us is, um, eating good, eating healthy, maybe having some local talent, some volunteers that, um, you know, wanna teach people how to cook, and, you know, I don't know, charge fifty, a hundred, a class, something like that, and that goes towards the city. Of course, um, I think it's important. I, I think if people over governate get involved, which of course they want to, they wanna know that their money's being, the, the city is using the money in the right way. Um, with finance control, I think that the point that Rachel made is great, because, um, you know, we can, we the, we the public can hold these, uh, characters, these people, um, accountable, maybe, maybe there's some formalities, there's some, uh, a limit to what people can do that, that work for the city, but, you know, we, we got your back, you know? Somebody's spending money the way they're not supposed to be, we can, you know, help, uh, watch that. Um, another thing, I thought maybe, um, with, uh, affordable housing, I think that's a big one. Uh, and, um, like, I, and another point Rachel made was Vista Maria. I mean, if this is a, this is a nonprofit that's getting, um, a lot of tax deductions, not paying property tax, whatever, I think we should be able to have our own investigations. I can tell you for a fact, I lived there, and I also worked there. So, ev- and everybody that, that works there goes, that is totally correct. Uh, not to go too much in detail, but, um, the main issue that those girls have is not having anything to, no structure trigger, you're having all this funding coming in, and they're essentially just being treated like, like cash cows, you know, for lack of a better word. You know, uh, while they're there till they're eighteen, and then, you know, they're off, they do whatever they have to fend for themselves. So I think having a, like, I mean, Vista Maria can easily use that funding to build affordable housing for when they do age out. And that's not being done, um, that's not being done. Uh, so that, that's a big issue, and I, I mean, you don't need someone with a PhD to tell you what's working, what's not. I mean, you could just use maybe information from people that used to, like, lived there like myself, or worked there. Just that, I mean, anybody can tell you that we need more affordable housing. I mean, as of now, we only have one place, and it's a senior center for sixty-two and up. I have a disability, and I've been, um, yeah, I've been dealing with homelessness for ten years, and only now I finally made my, I guess you could say my big break. And, you know, I'm trying to see what's going, what's going on. It's like now I can kinda focus on, uh, my city, who, my career. When you're homeless, you can't do things like that. You know, you were stuck, you were so stuck. So I'm just trying to figure out, uh, trying to figure out how, how we can prevent this kind of pain from happening to people like me, if we're disabled, or in foster care, homeless. How can we prevent that pain from happening in the future? Um, so, uh, I think that's most my hope for me to make sure, um. Uh, and I, I just wanna briefly ask about the R X kids program, if that's something that the Dearborn Heights is gonna get funding for, but I'm not sure, because it sounds like there's some financial issues. Um, but yeah, I think the courses are great, and I'd love to, you know, maybe we could meet with other, um, neighbors and, um, people, see, what could, maybe we can have a little cooking class at the library, or, or, uh, maybe use some empty public land, um, to build like some kind of garden. Um, bring visitors in, bring revenue in, so, yeah.
Thank you so much, Nargis, and I love all those ideas. And really, I wanna say, uh, you know, being somebody that grew up in a foster home and is now working there, trying to give back from what she has learned, uh, you know, thank you for all that you have done. And those are some really, really great points that you have brought forward. Thank you.
Council chair.
I don't, I don't, let's not discuss.
No, uh, Nargis, if you can get my email off the city's website, and email me about some stuff you discussed, or send me an email with your information on it, please, I'd like to have a conversation with you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Ken.
She's muted.
She's not an unmute, go ahead, I'll give her thirty quick seconds.
Sorry, what was the email?
It's gonna be H Saab, S A A B, at DearbornHeightsMI.gov.
Sorry, one more time.
It's on the city website.
It's on the city's website, but it's H A S S, I'm sorry, it's H Saab.
It's like Henry.
Yeah, last name is, you know, Saab, S A A B,
Uh-huh.
at DearbornHeightsMI.gov.
Okay. Okay, it said email you?
Yeah. So, email me your info, please.
Alright, of course, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we're gonna go with, uh, we'll go with Sukey.
Good evening, council, um, first off, I wanna say at night, and I wish I could be optimistic like Renee, but there is no way that I think you guys can evoke this, uh, budget in. And a few points. Um, we spent a lot of money on plant Moran. And plant Moran has failed to find some errors that were addressed, uh, by our clerk, who I love. Um, it was thirty thousand dollars that wasn't allocated properly. My question is, since plant Moran's paid all this money, and they didn't find some errors that were done, do we have anything where they're responsible, or we can reduce it? I know, you know, if you go to H and R Block and you get audited, they take their fee away. So we need to do something with plant Moran. Um, the other thing is, I don't remember if the contract for the police has forty-five police or more. Obviously, forty-five's not enough. Um, I think you guys should look at the proposed, go ahead.
It's fifty-three.
It's fifty-three now, we upped it.
No, it is, it's forty-five, but I've, uh, I'm working with the chief on restructuring the police department in the next few months. And, uh, we will be presenting a new personnel page once we actually get the staffing in order in that department.
Well, I mean, and, and I know we're, we still have the, uh, Director of Support Services on there as well, too, correct?
Sorry about that.
The Director of Support Services, he's still on there. I, I don't wanna talk about, but, uh, is that okay, Roger, he has discharged himself?
I would leave it alone, too, because he gave a couple dates. I don't think he's given a formal resignation.
No, there was an email that was, it was an email that was sent out, you're on.
I know, but I mean, it's gotta, it's a formal process that I was told it was not done as yet. I, I just heard from controllers. So I was just leaving it alone tonight.
I know, but did he turn on, did he turn in his car and his, and everything?
I, I don't know, everything that's been turned in.
You're on the email.
I, I don't know if everything's been signed and turned in.
No, he said he was gonna speak.
Or been accepted, that's what I'm saying.
We'll leave it, because we don't wanna violate anything, so we're gonna leave everything as it is. But we know that there's still a hundred, extra hundred thirty thousand.
And I spoke with the chief, and we've already discussed our game plan. Um, hopefully, within the next six months, we're gonna redesign the personnel of that department to have fifty police officers, and it should only equate to about a forty thousand dollar change, fifty thousand dollar change of the entire police department budget. However, uh, that will also allow, alleviate some of the overtime expenses and bring a little bit of revenue, since patrol officers are the one that generate ticket revenue. Um, and to come on plant Moran, um, they aren't perfect. Uh, they never focused on the business licensing software. Uh, they focused on the general ledger part, and they've had a lot of work, uh, working with the controller, as well as the treasurer, um, with bank racks and, um, entry errors, GL errors. Uh, which is why I spoke earlier, um, that once I get an accountant and a controller, I don't know who's gonna be the controller, whether it's gonna be me or somebody that the next mayor appoints. Um, I do believe that we are gonna need an accountant analyst position that takes on that role of, uh, that plant Moran's currently taking on in the day-to-day entries, and ensuring that the GLs are properly updated, that revenues are hitting the correct accounts, expenses are hitting the correct accounts, as well as doing a, a budget to actual analysis on a month-to-month or even a bi-weekly basis, to ensure we don't fall into the same overspending issues we previously had. I,
By the, Mary, I'm so sorry to cut you off, please forgive me. Were you able to get us the breakdown of weight trim? As you said, you were gonna give me everything we're paying weight trim to contractual services, remember?
Yeah, I pulled it up on the screen, but I can give you an actual.
Yeah, I need the, and it was supposed to be broken down on a separate thing with the city engineering, but, but because we're putting everything in, in contractual services.
Oh, I, I pulled it up on the screen, we said we're gonna do one point three million dollars. If I can get you the actual spending.
We're, we're spending one point three million with them?
Yeah, about this year, however, um, I did speak with the engineer about that. Keep in mind that Weight Trim is a project-based engineering firm, so we only contract them when we have a plethora of projects.
But, but we're putting one point three million dollars in, in expenses for Weight Trim. I'd like to see that closer to maybe a million dollars. Or maybe we can, yeah, let's, I'd like to see that at a million dollars.
So,
I, I know you guys, I know we're gonna push back and forth.
Oh, no, no, I agree with you, I'm saying.
It really should be like five hundred, I mean, we're giving Weight Trim.
We are gonna need to hire a couple of field engineers to help alleviate some of the field engineering that Weight Trim does.
Can you update this budget so that it shows that they're only making a million dollars, please?
Council chair, if I may, um, I would be careful. Perhaps we should look at the breakdown first, because the reason that they're spending so much money this particular year is because of the excessive amount of projects that we have in the water department, and they are our engineers for those projects. So, everything that you saw in those grants, they're the ones who are doing the engineering for all of those. So those are getting reimbursed through grants. So although the expenditure will show as a million dollars, a lot of that is getting reimbursed through the grants. So unless you have like a specific breakdown of project by project, that would give you a clearer idea of what you can and cannot cut, just based on the existing contracts.
We're gonna give them a million dollars. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna contractual services to a million dollars.
I'll work with the engineer.
We don't need one point three million, I think a million dollars is more than enough. Our city is really, really in a tough position.
I know, I, I'll work with the engineer on that.
I'm looking at like, raining project, four thousand dollars. Paving project change, a thousand dollars. Citywide stormwater and flood, seven hundred ninety dollars. What have you done for citywide stormwater and flood? You know, uh, DWSRF meter replacement. They're consulting us and charging us twelve thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars. What I'm trying to say is, we can find ways, the administration and management can find ways to, to weigh trim. Either we're gonna go out for bids.
We did go out for bids, that's what I'm trying to explain. So for all of those water projects, we went out for bids, and they were the winners, and they were awarded the bids for all of those projects. A lot of them are more than a million dollars. So I would just be careful. We can give you the specifics of each contract that they have, but the ones that are existing contracts, you simply can't cut.
For twenty-five, twenty-six, I'd like to see Weight Trim at contractual services for no more than a million dollars.
So, well, Mariana is trying. No.
Thank you.
Okay, um, back to the whole plant Moran thing. Um, I, I know when I first got hired here, I kind of alluded to a plan on how to remove plant Moran and reduce their contractual services. Um, now that I'm more in a position of power, so to speak, um, I do, um, wanna speak with council, whether it's in a session or not in a session, about the game plan and how I think we can move the city forward in terms of the finance department, and ensuring that we are efficient and optimized, and not relying on a third-party contractor to do day-to-day, uh, business for our city.
I just, I also want you to keep in mind, six, seven years, and I know Sue used to have time. Six, seven years, I know we keep talking about the controllers department, never had a CPA. We've never hired a CPA to run our finance department. It's, it's mind-boggling. You've had five or six or seven different directors.
David Sabruto was a,
So with the,
David Sabruto was contracted out. He was the only CPA that came in here who ran a municipality. Every director was, was, was ne- has never had a CPA degree. Like, guys, come on, like, we need to think of that for a second. How are you gonna have a finance department, then we're gonna say we wanna have a CPA analyst to be, to, to, to look at things, but the director doesn't need to be a CPA?
I'm not saying that the analyst needs to be a CPA, the analyst just has to have a business and accounting background. The analyst is gonna be a sixty-six thousand dollar position. It's not gonna be a director position.
I think the director needs to have a CPA degree, and I think there needs to be a policy put in place for, for, not just for the sake of the next mayor, but for the sake of the city and its finances.
I,
'cause you know when Mayor Dan Polacko was here, and he was around, God rest his soul? He had, he had a CPA degree, worked for the Big Three. And you know who overdid the budget? The, the mayor, the guy that had a CPA degree.
Council chair, with that, may I make a recommendation? So we currently have the position posted, it's been posted since we knew Shannon was leaving. Uh, the candidates that we're getting aren't great. Even though we did increase our salary for that position, they're, they're not great. None of them have CPAs. We did get quotes from, uh, various recruiting firms. Um, we did get quotes from, uh, various recruiting firms, they would charge twenty-three percent of that person's salary in order to try to do a recruiting, um, search for us. No, um, we went through private companies this time, cause we didn't like the results that we received from Robert Hath in the past. But yes, pretty much any recruiting firm, um, would charge us about twenty-three percent to do a recruiting for us. Um, again, we're not thrilled with the candidates that we've received, I shared them with Plant Moran, we're gonna potentially interview two, um, but it's, it's scarce, like, the opportunity for CPAs out there, it's, it's limited. Every community is looking for them right now, um, so, again, it's gonna be a tough find. If, if any of you know CPAs, or anybody that has background in municipal accounting, please send them our way. Uh, but it has been, for the past few years, an extremely competitive market, and extremely hard to find candidates, which is why we've had such high turnover. Um, there are better salaries, easier positions to be in, and, um, the candidates keep leaving. But if you would like to approve the twenty-three percent, uh, payment to one of those contractors, we can present it to you at the next council meeting.
Council chair, I, I just wanna respond to it. Go ahead. I swear, I would pay, I would pay a municipal CPA, you can give him two hundred thousand dollars. And, 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 and the truth is, you're eliminating Plant Moran gap, you're, you're giving him an a hundred thousand dollar increase, and you're gonna have him run all the finances for the city that's gonna manage, I think Vince said it like a hundred times, why don't we have like a manager that oversees our spending, like, we don't have that. You know who used to do that for us, was the late mayor, was Dan Pletko.
And I understand that, council chair, the point I'm trying to make is, my game plan is to get that point. Now, I, I would love to have a CPA in that department, I would love to have it, but at a hundred fifteen thousand, you're going, you're gonna get people with forty-five years of municipal experience, you're gonna get people closer to my level of experience, I'm not saying I'm the smartest or the bravest.
You do a great job, Matty, this is.
No, I know that, and I'm just giving you a heads up, like, you're right, you're gonna have to get to the one fifty to one seventy mark to truly get.
Hundred percent, council chair.
But, and I do wanna give you a heads up, I personally say you keep your options open, and if the right candidate shows up that has the correct experience and the correct mindset, and the correct background that you need, the CPA isn't required. The reason I'm saying this is, although I'm looking to lessen Plant Moran, I'm not saying to get rid of them completely. They can be somewhere around thirty to fifty thousand per year, just to ensure that the audit work is done correctly, and that way, you pay your, your comptroller, hundred fifteen, hundred twenty, you're paying Plant Moran fifty thousand, and you cover the CPA duties, and not have to try to find a CPA. Now, if you do find a CPA at a hundred fifty to a hundred seventy-five thousand, then you can remove Plant Moran completely, cause that CPA would take on those duties.
Thank you. Go ahead.
We'll just briefly, one thing about a CPA, they're certified to do audits.
Yes, that's.
No, and, and like, Plant Moran will tell us, they, they test certain areas, it's a little big science to, to it. Our comptroller issues the checks, and so, what we need is somebody familiar with, I, I can't think of a city in the, the area that has a certified public accountant as a comptroller, it would be nice, but you're, you're, as Matty said, you're looking at a big expense for, um, uh.
We've spent over a million dollars in three years.
Uh, the comptroller's office, um, uh, somebody with, like, in Westland, he's Steve Smith, he used to work here. Um, he's been doing it for twenty, and that's where Shannon came from, was, was Westland.
Council chair.
Well, hang on, I, I want Sue, cause we took her time.
Can I make one more comment, and then I'm gonna let.
Let, let's, let's, yeah, let's, let Sue have, it's her, it's her time.
Okay.
Thank you, glad Sue.
Hi, hi, everybody, um, I would suggest that, well, when Chief Swob was here, he promised that the reserves were gonna start ticketing on garbage day, and he said that publicly, he said that to me. It hasn't happened, we heard from the police department about that earlier. I think you need to take a hard look at the anticipated revenues for police, because if they have in there that they're planning on getting tickets for parking on garbage day, I really fail to believe that's gonna come to fruition, so I question how much they have in their revenue budget. Um, the other thing that just really concerned me, Mariana just said that she was gonna give the resumes to Plant Moran. I really don't want Plant Moran to decide who my city is gonna look at for a candidate for this position, because they haven't proven themselves. That's up to you guys, I'm just saying how I feel about it, I would much rather Matty look at the resumes, um, because he seems like he has a vision that is much more financially in tune with what we need. And then we're back to the grant writer, and I know that council is the financial body, legislative body, that you can't make that position, it sure would make a difference in the budget, and again, I think it's because our mayor just wants to see our city fail. So, uh, maybe he won't come back from DC, and that would be the best thing we could do for our city. I'm sorry that all of you have to do all of this, um, and deal with this, but in my opinion, you guys will not be doing your job if you approve this budget as it stands, because we have a contractual obligation to Warren Bailey to do that parking lot, and if the banquet center and the restaurant and coffee shop can't open because of that parking lot, there is no way we're ever gonna make revenue. And I know it's like a merry-go-round that we can't get off of, um, I'm glad it's your decision and not mine.
Thank you.
Try, try and have a good night.
Thank you so much, Sue, I appreciate that. We're gonna take it over to, uh, our treasurer, Lisa Hexclan. Are you speaking as a treasurer, or are you speaking as a resident?
I'm speaking as the treasurer, good evening, honorable council chair, council members, as well as our residents who are joining tonight. Um, first of all, I wanna say, it's really exciting to hear some of the residents' comments, and some of their suggestions. I think that it's wonderful, we need to have that kind of engagement, we need to hear from them, we need to listen to them. You know, we do twice as much listening as we do talking, so I think it's really important to take those points. Um, I do wanna echo what Rachel La Pointe said earlier in her comments, several things, in, in particular, the budget to actual reporting, that, um, council, we used to meet monthly in a study session, and reviewed them, budget actuals, every single month, and that's something that I had suggested as council member back in early twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. I will tell you, as treasurer, I still do that to this day, I review my budget to actual for my department every single month. You get, as council members, you get a report from me, reporting out why my budget actual is where it is percentage-wise, and the overall health. I feel that department has, have all due, and probably most of them do, I hope, um, responsibility to review their budget to actuals, so they know where they are, where their percentage falls, if you're, you know, in, at six-month mark, you know, you're not going over fifty percent, it's really that easy, when it comes to, so you can simplify it, is what I'm trying to say, you don't have to be a finance expert for that, but simplify it so you can know where you are. I will tell you, my concern as treasurer, is that last week, along with check, the check run, and I communicated this with council members as well, a very large number of the checks that were drawn and issued, were issued and drawn on exhausted general ledger funds, uh, account of general ledger numbers, which violates the city charter, section eight point nine. I think it's very important that we follow the budget that is approved by this honorable body adopted, and that budget actual is going to help you, so please, um, that's for everybody, to take a look and review that monthly, in the very minimum. Um, I do wanna also remind you real quick about the fund balance policy, I think I talk about this every single time. I, quite frankly, I'm uncomfortable with this budget, and, uh, you do have a fiduciary responsibility, you all know that, you all are very good at what you do, and I appreciate you all, but that fund balance policy of eight percent on a sixty-million-dollar budget, you're looking at four point eight million, uh, would be in violation of that, so I'm very concerned about this. Um, regarding the resident that came on and talked about involvement, I think that's great, I just wanna finish with a positive note. I encourage anybody who wants to be involved in their city government, do so, and that includes volunteering to serve on a commission. There are many vacancies on city commissions, and I encourage you, no matter your age, you know, you can be twenty, you can be thirty, you can be forty, fifty, seventy, I, just get involved in your city if you choose to. And if you have any questions, you can contact me in the treasurer's office, I'll be happy to assist and help you point you that direction. And I can be reached at three one three, seven nine one, three four one seven. Thank you, council chair, and thank you, council members, and thank you, administration.
Thank you so much, we have Ken next, how you doing, Ken, please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on. You have five minutes, let him unmute himself first, pause it. All right, Ken, I'm gonna, we're gonna try to walk you through this, I'm gonna lock me out from unmuting myself, I'm gonna try to unmute. So if you go, there should be the three little, um, dots on the right top right-hand corner, if you hit unmute, unmute my audio.
He's not here.
Oh, darn.
He's down on the bottom, he took his hand out.
Raise his hand back up. All right, thank you, Ken, for raising your hand back up, click those three little dots in the top right-hand corner above your name. If you see above your name, you highlight in the top right-hand corner, you're gonna see three little dots, and you're gonna hit unmute my audio. The host has to allow you to participate in unmuting, okay, can you try to give me, for me? Try to do it for me, so I can see what he's looking at. Okay, oh, wow, okay, so it should just pop up, and it should say in blue, unmute or stay muted. Speakerphone on your phone's not gonna work.
Well, if you could just hold it.
If you want to, I guess. What is it? Yeah, try to give him a call, and, Ken, we're gonna call you, well, what is it? Lori, Lori Mullen? Oh, 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 we're, com check, okay. Ah, really? Lori, can you really, you don't know how to use that, what's going on there, Lori? Yeah.
Yeah, I've, I've accidentally turned off my mic access.
I think Chris is like the IT guy, maybe we should send him to her house, like, fix it. We're in no rush here, at all, Karen, Lori. You do have to put on speaker so that we can hear everything. Lori, can you hear us?
Yes.
All right.
I, I just wanted to say.
Clean up the little closer, hang on.
Can you hear me?
Hold on one second. There you go.
Okay, sorry about that, uh, every time I hit unmute, it wouldn't do it.
Okay.
I just, I just wanted to say, I don't feel like this budget is realistic. I haven't had time to go in depth or over it, but just listening to things tonight, just one thing popped out right away, like, when they were talking about the uniforms for the DPW, um, they didn't include boots, which are gonna be another fifteen grand, um, jackets, which are probably another, be another three to five grand a year, and I'm sure there's many more things that aren't accounted for.
Lori, I want you to know that, that Mahdi is waving his hand, saying we did account for boots, we did account them, uh.
He, well, he stated that he just, um, accounted for the contract for Universe.
I stated that, however, part of that was, uh, there's three departments, highway, uh, building maintenance, and water, which the Universe contract, and the boots, and the jackets are all, uh, split across.
Okay.
Yeah, it was my mistake, it was my mistake that I didn't actually go more in depth on that line.
Well, because just boots alone is, for the DPW, is like thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars. So how can fifteen thousand dollars?
Lot of money.
Be an adequate budget for uniforms and boots?
That's split across water, highway, and building maintenance.
So there's fifteen thousand in each one, each department, so.
Somewhere, fifteen thousand in each one.
So fifteen, thirty, forty-five thousand was actually budgeted, hypothetically, that's roughly around there, you're saying.
Okay.
Sorry, Lori. You can beat me up.
No, it's not just that, I just, you know, I just feel like it's too close for comfort, the whole budget.
Understood.
All right, I do want you guys to know that Councilman, uh, Ahmad does have cleave. You got, just all the family obligations, and that's okay. Yeah, Lori, continue. Anything else?
Yeah, finally unmuted.
Oh, you are?
I think so.
No.
No, you're muted.
It's muted up there.
No, I'm on the phone still, though.
It shows that she's.
Any other questions?
Um, no, I just, I do feel like you didn't give the residents enough time to look at the budget, the final budget, um, so I kinda agree with Rachel.
Well, unfortunately, we got the budget today also.
Yeah, we also, we just got the.
We're, we're not voting on it today, so.
And we're not voting on it, this is our, this is our public hearing.
I can't, I can't hear you.
This is our, this is our public hearing, this is not, we're not voting.
No, 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 I understand that, but the public needs more time to express their concerns at the public hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all.
Thank you.
For now. Thanks, thank you so much.
All right. Anyone else on Zoom, anyone else in the audience? Next up, we're going to close the public hearing.
Council chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council closed the public hearing at eight forty-seven PM, second.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have, we have five B opening the public hearing to alleviating public hearing Ford Road between Berwin Street and Norborn Avenue.
Council chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council opened the public hearing at eight forty-seven PM for the purpose of hearing comments and/or objections, if any, to the proposed alleviation of, of Ford Road between Berwin Street and Norborn Avenue, as outlined in five dash B.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by, uh, Councilwoman Breyer, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Uh, we have public hearings regarding, regarding them, anybody wanna petition this? Anybody on Zoom? Seeing none? Anyone else, anyone else, I wanna make this fair. Nobody, okay, next up, we have the, okay, closing the public hearing.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council closed the public hearing at eight forty-eight PM, second.
All right, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, uh, Council Chairman Baydon's resolution to revert the name of the summer festival back to Spirit Festival.
Council chair.
Yep, councilman.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the following resolution to revert the name of the summer festival back to Spirit Festival, whereas the city of Dearborn Heights has historically supplied an annual festival known as the Spirit Festival, which has been a cherished event in the community, and whereas the festival was temporarily renamed Summer Festival through a decision that was prompted, has prompted community feedback, feedback and discussion regarding the significance of the original name, and whereas, following careful consideration and input from residents, it's clear that the community prefers the name Spirit Festival to reflect on the values and spirit of our city, and whereas, any future changes to the festival's name might, must require the approval of my majority of the city council to ensure the community's voice is heard. Now, therefore, it ought to be resolved that the city council of Dearborn Heights that, one, the name of the festival shall be officially changed back to Spirit Festival, two, all promotion material signage and communication will be updated to reflect this change, three, any future proposal to change the name in the festival must be received by a majority of the approval of the city council. Be further resolved that the resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption, as outlined in eleven A.
Support, motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad, any discussion? I would like to talk a little bit about this. I think this has been a a pretty hot topic in the community. I think the Summer Fest is a great name, but I think traditionally, we've always been the Spirit Festival. I spoke with the um Parks and Recreation Director, and he's kinda like, hey, get this out here quick, so that I can start creating our flyers and our banners, and we can go back to being the Spirit Festival. I mean, till this day, I think almost anybody that talks about the festival calls it the Spirit Festival, and so I think this was very important, and and I'm glad that uh we brought some attention to this, and I hopefully this passes tonight. Any other discussion?
Council Chair.
Yes, sir. Councilman, uh, Congressman.
Quickly, one of the things that happened is they couldn't get the ride company to come close to the Fourth of July. Like this year, it's, I'm just looking, it's June seventh through the eleventh, and so that was one of the reasons for the change, but I agree, it was called the Spirit Festival, it's like the Livonia Spring. It's, it it should be known as the Spirit Festival.
Anything else? Thank you, Councilman. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor to go back to being the Spirit Festival, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, congratulations, we're back to the Spirit Festival. Next up, we have new business, none, members of the public.
Comments from council members.
Uh, comments from council members.
Council Chair, um, in regards to the mayor being out of the country, I recently addressed this with some people, um, our charter addresses the protocol that when the mayor is not able to attend to the city because they are out of state or country, Council Chair takes over the role of mayor. When Polacko was unable to perform his duties, I as Council Chair at the time took over. When Ken Baron was Council Chair, he also took over when Polacko was out of town. The Chief of Staff is not elected by the residents, and we owe the residents respect of Council Chair taking over when the mayor is absent. This is because if there's an emergency that needs a split-second decision, we need someone in the city on-site to access the situation in person, um, to make sure they make the right decision, not just, you know, play the telephone game where, you know, he said, she said, and you're telling them what you're seeing, but you really need to be there in person. So our residents deserve this, and that's all I've got to say.
Thank you so much. Any other comments from council members?
Council Chair, I just wanna wish all the mothers out there, I know it's Mother's Day this coming Sunday, so Happy Mother's Day, especially to the mothers in our great city, uh, my mother, my mother, my own mother, my wife, and of course, my mother-in-law, just to be on the safe side. But I won't be in trouble, so Happy Mother's Day, everyone.
Anyone else? I will say also, just since Councilman uh Ahmad put it out there, and I almost forgot, Happy Mother's Day to all the beautiful, amazing mothers in our community. Uh, we have, you know, some of the greatest mothers in this community, including my wife, my mother, um. And my mother-in-law. My mother-in-law is actually amazing, she comes over almost every day, hops out with the kids, helps my wife out a lot. She's an amazing mother, so is my mother, so I don't, my mother's like, why, you didn't say my name? And to my beautiful sisters and and so many mothers in here, to all the mothers here as well that are in attendance, and the ones that also work with us, uh, and to the elected ones. I also want to uh tell Mariana, this is nothing personal, when we go over the budget, it's budget season, it's heated. I feel like, kinda like a lot of the people, this is a balloon, it's not real, I feel like these numbers are truly inflated, like, we really inflated these numbers to try to figure out the spending, and we're gonna have to figure some of some of this uh budget out. I know these are great, Plant Moran gave us some opinions, but I think that's ultimately uh, you know, not the best decision here. I think we need to figure some things out. Anyone else?
Council Chair.
Yep.
Yeah, I too, just wanna wish everyone a happy and blessed Mother's Day, and have everyone remember to honor their mother and all our mothers' raising families. Thank you.
Anyone else? And next up, we'll go to announcements.
Council Chair.
Yep.
Okay, I just wanna let everybody know that this month, uh, May twenty-second is gonna be the South Dearborn Heights Civic Association meeting, it comes a little earlier. We have Erin Verns coming from the House of Representatives there, and we also will have someone from Sri's office if he does not be able to attend himself. That's at seven o'clock, three, three, congressman, yes, uh, three, three, six, five.
Three, 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 five.
South Beach Daily, you know that one forever, uh, and that's seven o'clock, and then the Ekor's Creek meeting will be on the twenty-eighth, which is a Wednesday, at six o'clock at the same location. It is anticipated at this point that in June, our meeting will be centered around our mayoral candidates, and we will interview all four.
Cool. Thank you.
So we figured we better do it, you know, before July.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
Can I make a TMI announcement?
Yes.
Okay, so for Thrive by Any Means Necessary, which is the nonprofit that kind of um worked in collaboration a lot with the CCRC Commission, um, we have our second annual Our Children's Legacy Brunch this weekend. Leslie asked me to come and make sure everybody knew about this. Um, the brunch and the celebration honors um a few families in the community that have lost a child in some instance, um, and gives them a chance to share their story and how they're gonna make their child's legacy come to life in the city. Um, so this year, we'll have, hopefully, our three honorees from last year come back and give us an update on their projects, and then we'll have three new honorees, um, of which I'm one, I'm gonna be discussing my sister Celeste, who would have been twenty this year, um, and I'm gonna be discussing sibling grief and how siblings sometimes kinda get left out of things. Um, I'm really excited to share Celeste's story with everybody. Um, I know the other families are really, it is, you're excited, but you're not, so it's it's a lot. So it's this weekend, May tenth, um, from eleven to two at OW Best Middle School, tickets are twenty-five dollars, and they will be available at the door, and we're really excited to see everybody. There'll be a whole brunch, I'm really excited about the food, it sounds like it's gonna be a great menu, and we'll have a good time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It was very good last year.
Yeah, I'll send, I'll send you guys the flyer.
Thank you. All right, uh, next up is gonna be public comments. I'll take it over to Zoom first. Anyone on Zoom that has any public comments? Seeing none, I'll take it over to in-person, public comments. All right, seeing none.
Council Chair, motion to adjourn.
No, hold on one second, one second.
I thought you was messing up.
How you doing, ma'am?
Renee, Dearborn Heights, Annapolis.[1736.58]